Recording.
Okay.
I need to turn it up.
Are you ready? Yeah, cool. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 7th, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, starting at 6 o'clock PM. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that moves us on to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All right, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, next order of business is public comment. This is for items that are on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium stating your name and address. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include regular meeting minutes of Monday, March 17th, 2025, blossom time vendors, new board appointment, board reappointments, bluff stairs, mural request, St. Joseph Housing Commission monthly update, Gallagher Health Insurance Consultant Contract Approval, invoice and tax disbursements, broadband equity access and deployment program, and category B grant in 2025 resurfacing project bids. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ulri?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, item number 14 is community ambulance echo units.
Part of this conversations occurred at the last commission, SMACAS Ambulance and Medic One, to discuss the use of echo units in Marion County, and Director Jason Wiley will talk further about what that is. What he has requested today is an additional $1 per capita to implement this unit. The population of the city of St. Joseph is currently 7,856, so this would be an increase of that amount to the current $78,650 if approved, and Jason Wiley with SMACAS Ambulance will discuss this program.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I was here about three weeks ago, mentioned briefly what Steve presented, kind of a real 30,000-foot view, and was invited back today to kind of give you guys the breakdown of what that looks like. So I have Brian Scrivner here with me. He is the director of SMACAS Ambulance. My name is Jason Wiley. I'm the director of Medic One Ambulance, which obviously you guys have supported, and we've served you guys for a long time. So, uh, thank you. This is the technical names of our respective agencies. So we are Community Emergency Service, DBA Medic One. We were established in 1977. SMACAS is Southwest Michigan Community Ambulance Service, and they were established in 1976. Those dates are actually important. Uh, we can go to the next one. This is our agency's respective mission statements. On the left, you see Medic One Ambulance. I won't go through it, but it's kind of a mess. Uh, this is a literal plaque that looks like it's from 1977. Uh, this sits outside of one of our bathrooms in our dayroom area. There's spelling errors, grammatical errors. SMACAS, we're not even gonna read that thing, but that is from their website directly. We presented last year to our entire companies, our entire boards, and total, that's probably about 160 people or so. How many of them do you think could recite the mission statement of either company? Zero. Correct. Carrying out a mission is difficult, but those you charge with carrying it out don't know what it is. So, uh, next slide, please. Similarly, our current model of operation is what we call a static operation. That means we have an ambulance, an advanced life support ambulance. So you'll hear a couple acronyms. You'll hear ALS, that's Advanced Life Support. That is a paramedic level of treatment or basic life support, BLS, that is a basic level of treatment. So currently, both of our companies have what we call a static ALS model. That is at least one paramedic and at least one EMT basic stationed together in an ambulance, and they sit there for 24 hours a day and respond as they are called. SMACAS is the same. That is the same operational model we've both had for about 50 years now. The problem is, everything's changed since 1977, right? But we haven't. And the result of that, nearly 50 years later, are some specific industry-specific problems that have caused, that have come up because we just haven't changed. So Brian's gonna go through some of those specifics with you, and then I'm gonna circle back and present to you guys the solution that we think will work.
All right, thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, so our industry has had a number of issues, and really, I'm sure you're all tired of hearing about the COVID pandemic, but that really brought, it was a catalyst to bring everything to a head for us. EMS was kind of a Swiss Army knife for the healthcare industry, and it really pushed us to our very limits, and it caused us to look at the world a little differently as well. Some of our company and industry challenges are listed up there. If you look at everything on the left side of that list, uh, those are the things that I'm probably the most passionate about wanting to change, the staffing shortage. Incidentally, uh, probably one of the reasons, uh, one of the things that got Jason and I talking or thinking about the idea of partnering was, we wrote a, 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 um, grant together, uh, and collected nearly $400,000 and partnered in a paramedic program that put, uh, in our county 12, 12 paramedics on the road, which is a big dent in that staffing shortage challenge. And, uh, we, I don't think either one of us could have done that alone. Uh, so it's that kind of strength of having that depth of operation that, that brought us there. We're worried about the health and safety of our staff. Jason mentioned that we put people on 24-hour cars, and we have them sit there for 24 hours and wait for calls. Study after study after study has demonstrated that when you put people on a 24-hour shift and you disrupt their sleep cycles over and over, especially in our urban areas, between Niles and St. Joe and Ben Harbor, uh, it's not good for their mental health, it's not good for their physical health. We want to move away from that in areas, at least in the areas where we have the heaviest call volume. Recruitment intent, retention, again, that comes back to, uh, what we've done so far, but being able to get people into the system has been a real challenge, especially during the pandemic, when we were working people very hard, uh, and a lot of people were leaving, and there was nobody in the pipeline getting the training. Uh, we want to change that. We want to make this a destination career, where this is something that people, uh, come into and, and stay for years and, and keep all that experience in our communities. Change this slide. So one of our, uh, challenges, this is one of the mindsets that we have to get away from, and this is hard for me, because I have preached the importance of advanced life support my entire career. I've been here, I've been in this field for 36 years, and I've talked about how important advanced life support is. Uh, a quality system, a gold standard system back in the day was 100% advanced life support response, and I've managed a couple of systems like that over the years, uh, and was very proud of it. Oddly, only 20% of those calls required any kind of advanced life support, not necessarily even life-saving, just advanced life support. Maybe they needed an IV or, uh, some kind of medication that they could have technically got at the hospital, but we were able to provide that intervention in the field. And even stranger is that only about 3% to 6% of those calls required time-critical interventions, really, really sick patients that would die if we weren't there to intervene. What that results in is you have a number, you have a, first off, it's very expensive to run 100% system for 3% to 6% of your calls, and we have developed, on the other side of this, the receiving the call, the dispatching, the deploying the resource side, we know when we have those 3% to 6% of the patients before we roll out of the station. So, the challenge with all of that as well is that we're, we're using, you know, 100% of, 100% of our responses, we're using a paramedic, but the paramedics are only getting these critical intervention experiences 3% to 6% of the time. We're also learning in studies, peer-reviewed published studies, that if you crowd a system with paramedics and use them for everything, that will reduce the amount of experience they get on those critical calls, and it will reduce the, the, uh, positive outcomes for those. So we want to move away from that. We want to put paramedics, uh, on the calls where they are needed, make sure that we're properly utilizing that resource, that will not only reduce the cost of readiness, which I'm gonna talk about next, but it will increase their competence in the field. We have great medics here, but they need, there's just no way around it. They need that level of experience, uh, to, to run as many of those critical calls as they can. Next slide. So this is, uh, this is my artwork. I'm really proud of this. Um, this, if you see here, this is a timeline, and you can see the little red lines in between there. Those are ambulance calls, and then you can see the green lines, those are times when the ambulance is sitting there. That's what we call the cost of readiness, when the ambulance is sitting there prepared to respond. Now, the further that gap between responses, the higher the cost of readiness. The closer that gap is, the closer it is, uh, the tighter the system is stretched. So there's a balance there to maintain that cost of readiness, and what we want to do is develop a flexible system that can address the peaks and the valleys in our requests for response, that will provide us with a more efficient, more effective system. It will make sure that those paramedics are getting to the calls they need to, make sure that we don't have a bunch of people sitting around, and make sure that we're not killing our folks with, by overworking. Okay, next slide. This is a, a projected demand, uh, graph that I've drawn here. This was used off of real data that Jason and I combined and, uh, developed. This could be for any day of the week. It's a 24-hour period, and you can see how there's ebbs and flows, there's , uh, valleys and peaks to, to the demand. Uh, this is a fairly accurate way to project demand. We're looking at the number of times we were requested for response at any given time during the day. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, hit it once. This is our current staffing plan. That blue line is the line that we're using to cover that projected demand, and you can see that we're only right twice a day, maybe three times. We're pretty close there. Um, but we are way overstaffed at times when we know we're not going to need those ambulances, and we're way understaffed in those peaks during the midday. Okay, next slide. So what we want to do is develop a system that looks like this. You can see the blue line now follows that curve, and this isn't science, it's not technical, too technical for anybody, even fast food restaurants kind of use this model to staff and the like, and they know they have a lot more people there at lunch than they do at 3:00 in the morning. Uh, but we want to do that with our staffing as well. You can't do that with 24-hour cars. You gotta do that with some shorter shifts, which will, uh, take care of one of those problems that we have. There may be some 24-hour cars in there, but we're going to build a schedule that follows that curve, make sure we have plenty of staffing when we need it, and that we're not wasting resources that are very expensive to our communities. Okay, next slide.
So no one likes to be presented with a bunch of problems, uh, without a solution, right? So we want to come together to take Medic One Ambulance and SMACAS Ambulance and combine that into what we would like to call Southwest Michigan Mobile Healthcare. This is a new agency with a new vision and a new mindset and a completely new operational model, which is actually the most important piece. Next slide. So like we did in the late 70s, because in the late 70s, the static ALS model, or just the ALS model, advanced life support in general, was cutting edge. It was leading the industry at the time. It was innovative, it was new, and we, in this area, Medic One Ambulance and SMACAS Ambulance, were leading the way in the industry. We want to get back to the mindset of leading the way, not just rinse and repeat of what we've done for the last 50 years. We want to be innovative here again. Next slide, please. With this new agency, with a new vision, with a new mindset, logically should come with a new mission statement. My idea for a mission statement is this, to provide excellent, efficient, and physically responsible pre-hospital healthcare to the communities we serve. I think that's engaging. I think it's short enough, but encompassing enough, uh, to cover kind of all the bases, if you will, especially the word excellent. If you're striving for excellence, it doesn't matter if you're in 1977 or 2027. Whatever the industry demands to be at the top, to be in a place of excellence, we need to be flexible and have the mindset, the progressive-type mindset, to be able to adapt to that. Next slide, please. The operational changes that need to happen in the industry, and industries across the country that are leading the way, have already been making these types of changes, is really what's driving us coming together. It's not really us coming together and then figuring out how to operate together. We want to operate the best we can for you guys, and I think the merger makes that more possible. We get, as Brian has mentioned a couple of times, we just get a greater depth of operation. We just expand the capabilities. We can expand the contiguous coverage area that we both, we both touch each other's coverage area now. It just makes sense to make that one, uh, organization, and then I think we really have an opportunity now for real innovation again and real change. Next slide, please. Just to sum up some of the perks, we have a greater possibility for depth of operation with even potentially lower costs. At least, our goal is cost neutral. We can really flex in the deployment of our resources and our scheduling, and the most important piece we're gonna get into in a little bit more detail here is the efficient use of our resources. Excellent. So there, with anything, with any major change, there's been a lot of rumors and half-truths and whatever else, especially in the past 10, 10 or 10 months or so since we've been doing this. This is not Medic One looking to absorb and take over SMACAS or the other way around. Most importantly, this is not a downgrade of service. Typically, when you hear fewer paramedics, it's kind of like a freak-out, right? Oh, we can't do that. Actually, we can, and we should, because to Brian's point, we're using a finite resource like a paramedic 100% of the time when they're needed, 10% to 15% of the time. That just doesn't make sense. Why would we continue to do that? The real upgrade in service comes with that increase in efficiency. So those paramedic resources are available 100% of the time for the 15% of the time. They're not being tied up with the other 85% of the calls. They're there when you need them. That is the most important piece of what we're trying to do. Excellent. So the concept of the all ALS response back in the day was economy-driven. It's more economical to run 24-hour shifts all the time. To run one ambulance 24 hours a day, you need six full-time staff. To run that same ambulance but 12-hour shifts, you need eight full-time staff. So really, the mindset really was economy-driven, because it's, people are our most expensive asset, obviously. That is our highest cost. If you need less, it costs less. So that was kind of the mindset back in the day. We really want to hit on what Brian touched on. We really want our paramedics doing the procedures that are gonna save lives more frequently. Nobody wants to go to the surgeon who performs a certain surgery three times a year. They want to go to the, to the doctor who does it three times a day, right? We all want that. That's what we want to build with our paramedics. And at the end of the day, as Brian said, fewer paramedics actually is going to increase the level of care and competency that they're able to provide. Next slide. This new mindset. So traditionally, EMS, Emergency Medical Services, takes paramedics and EMTs out into the community, to wherever you're at, picks you up, drives you to healthcare, right? That's the concept behind Emergency Medical Services. We want to change that to a mindset where we're taking healthcare to you directly where you're at, mobile healthcare. Next slide. So we want to take a static, advanced life support model, and we want to take those base units and make them basic life support that covers the 85%. Then we want to create what is called a tiered response system. So depending on how the call comes into the 911 center, you call 911, it gets vetted by a dispatcher. They ask you a series of questions related to your medical condition, and then a determinant code is given out, and that's the level of response that the ambulance provides, whether they're licensed sirens, whether they're non-licensed sirens, et cetera, et cetera. So what we want to do is take some of those determinants and take some of those call types and either send a paramedic if it's needed, or not send them at all, leaving them available for potentially the follow-up call where they are needed. Instead of being tied up, they're now available where they're needed. That's kind of in a nutshell what's called a tiered response. What we also want to create is a really good community paramedic program. What that does is takes the paramedics to you, especially those lower acuity calls, and helps facilitate the right healthcare for you. Maybe it's just a telemedicine test. Maybe it's facilitating a ride to a clinic or your personal care physician. Maybe you just need to be checked out. Maybe you need help filling a prescription. We want to provide all that instead of tying up the one transporting ambulance with that patient and then tying up a bed at the ER. We want to increase the specialty care paramedics we have. We have paramedics that do extraordinary things in the field and in, and in the back of a metal box driving down the highway. We want to increase the capabilities we have specifically with specialty care transports, getting you from here to Grand Rapids, when you're on a ventilator with a chest tube, things like that. Again, when those specific paramedics are more readily available, the system just works better. And with that, we create some partnerships with our local health system, Corwell Health. Specifically in the community paramedic side, the specialty care is, is kind of there somewhat, but a new partnership really becomes available through the community side of it. The hospital is at great risk, excuse me, for what they call readmissions. So if you go to the emergency room for congestive heart failure, you get admitted to the hospital for congestive heart failure. You get discharged three days later. Once you're discharged, there's a 30-day window. If you go back to that hospital and get readmitted for congestive heart failure in the next 30 days, Corwell Health is at serious risk for financial penalties. We want to help them with that. We want to partner with them financially, good for us, financially, good for them. What does that look like? Take that same 30-day window, and we schedule a community paramedic to come see you five times in the next 30 days, and Corwell pays us per visit. We do med, medication reconciliation with you, we do an evaluation with you, we do maybe a telemedicine conference with you, maybe we get you prescriptions, whatever it is. Corwell will want to partner with us to prevent that readmission, and we can do that. Our medics are good at that. So that's a financial door open for us, and it's a financial penalty maybe Corwell doesn't have to face anymore. So there are partnerships like that that become possible. This is a concept, if we were to combine right now and go to a full-tiered, uh, full-scale tiered system, the green H's are the local hospitals as they sit now. The, uh, orange circle with the ambulance in it, uh, are our current stations, our static advanced life support stations. The black area, uh, excuse me, the black circle with the, the little ambulance is what we would propose for potential new stations, especially the one in, if you see right at the Glean area. You have Three Oaks Ambulance, but then you have a long way to go to, uh, the east or to the right, if you're looking at the screen, to get to, to SMACAS's ambulance there in Niles, and you gotta go quite a bit north to get to Bridgman to our ambulance. That's a lot of area that's just not covered very well. Same thing in Stevensville, there's just a big area in the center. In Lincoln Township, the Stevensville area has a pretty good call by. Similarly, over in Sister Lakes on the right, that could use another ambulance. So it's those types of progressive thinking that we really want to get into. And then the different circles with the little cars, the blue, the purple, and the red are different strategically placed echo units that would house a paramedic. So when Steve talked about the $1, that is for us this year to start a lease program for SUV units, to put paramedics in, get them mobile, get them out, get them more efficient. Next slide. It's just, so this is the result. Uh, this is what we're looking for. We're looking for a combined strong depth of operation and workforce. We want to provide better coverage area to those higher-volume areas and not burn our people out continually. And maybe like Brian said, the static coverage makes more sense for a new Buffalo or, you know, something that's just low volume. But at the end of the day, we want to send the right resources for the right call, not every resource to every call. That just doesn't make sense. Uh, next slide, I think, is questions?
Questions? Great. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. It was very clearly said. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, just having experience in the mental health field, how do you see mental health professionals fitting into what you're working with right now?
Sure. So the start of that would be on the inner facility side of it. So a mental health patient goes from St. Joe to a specialty care facility, Forest View, Pine Rast or something in the Grand Rapids area. Uh, a lot of what the studies are showing is providing alternate transport for that. So that really becomes an unmarked SUV unit with just a driver. Nobody in uniform. There's obviously some elopement precautions and things like that, but you're not strapping them down. You don't have uniformed people. It's not in a marked vehicle. You're not strapping them to a cot, making them ride backwards. It really de-escalates the whole situation from the beginning, because you're just giving them a ride.
And, and I believe you're, you might also be referring to, like in Colorado, I believe, the STAR program, uh, where we actually have mental health workers that respond to some of these things. In other communities, they're typically handled by law enforcement, and then to us, if it escalates and the like. I think it's a great idea. Um, I, I believe that as we move forward and create the, the dynamic that we hope to create, that we can do things like that as well. But we've talked about it at the level of transporting those people, um, in a more diversified and comfortable way. So, but long-term, I'm familiar with those systems, and I, I've read nothing but great stuff about them, so.
Yeah, great, thank you. So is this modeled on any other city that you've seen, or is this something you guys came up with? And how effective is it? This is yours.
There's no one locally really doing this to the scale we are. Most of our, uh, ideas come from a system in Fort Worth, Texas. We're actually looking to hire the consultant that started that system. Uh, they started it in a system of about a half a million calls a year, so a little bigger than we are, but it's, but it's so effective. There's, there's several models. Uh, Colorado Springs, I believe, is a really good model, and then is it, is it MedStar in Fort Worth?
Yeah.
They're, they're a very good model, too.
And they've reported that when they moved to this model, this general model, that every quality metrics they had in that system went up. Uh, it was highly successful. It wasn't just a, you know, affecting one little area. Everything in that system got better.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. There's one more slide with contact information. If anybody wants to take a picture of it, call either one of us, email either one of us anytime. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Now we're at the action question.
Um, so no more questions. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move-
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six community ambulance medic one echo units at seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and amend the general fund budget by increasing the one-on-one dash six-five-one dash eight-on-one line item to thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars for this fiscal year.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? Okay, Abby called the rule. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, on to item number fifteen, we've got downtown parking program overview.
Okay, well, it is my pleasure to provide an update on the downtown parking program. Um, I know the commission and, uh, DDA members and many of the folks in the room have heard about it a number of times. Um, we've got four agenda items tonight related to the downtown parking program, including the second reading of the ordinance, um, uh, resolution and talking about the downtown ambassadors. But I want to start by providing an overview, um, as we like to do, to go back and make sure that we've got everyone on the same page with the same basic information. Um, Eric Haggott is in the room somewhere, our consultant from Walker Consultants. He's hiding in the back, but he is also here and available to answer questions since so much of this work did rely, of course, on, um, Walker's expertise. Um, so, okay, I am presenting. So I like to start, um, by just providing a timeline of how we got here. Um, I think it's really important, this did not happen by any means overnight. Anyone who has spent any time in St. Joe knows that the topic of parking comes up in nearly every conversation. Um, so I'm going to start the timeline back in twenty sixteen when we last adopted our city's master plan. Um, in that master plan, there was an action item, um, focused on parking that called for enhancing enforcement during peak summer hours and conducting a parking study. So that was in twenty sixteen. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, the city started working on, um, the downtown vision master plan. As part of that, they engaged with over two thousand people. Um, and parking emerged as a key theme as part of that, uh, downtown vision master plan. It is actually, if you look at the report, the first key issue, um, key theme that comes up. Um, that downtown vision master plan was adopted unanimously in twenty twenty and it included a recommendation to create a paid parking plan for the downtown. Um, in January of twenty twenty-two, uh, so let me pause for a second. From then until January of twenty twenty-two, the downtown development authority began working on what it would look like to adopt a paid parking plan, as was the recommendation from the downtown vision master plan. Um, and so they recommended their approach to the city commission in January of twenty twenty-two. The city commission, um, asked for additional details. Um, so essentially, as I understand it, the city commission said, yeah, we want to do paid parking. We're not sure if all of these details are the right way to go. And so we want to create a parking subgroup. So in March of twenty twenty-two, a parking subgroup was created. It included two city commissioners and three to four DDA members as well as city staff. Um, that parking subgroup first met late in twenty twenty-two, um, and immediately said, um, gosh, we are not the experts on this. We really ought to bring in folks who are. Um, and so they decided to put out an RFP and select a consultant to come in. Um, and that is what happened in twenty twenty-three when the, uh, parking subgroup hired Walker Consultants. Um, they advised on recommendations. They looked at whether paid parking made sense for, um, the city and what it should look like. Um, and so in July of twenty twenty-four was the first time that this topic, um, with the recommendations from Walker Consultants came to the commission. The parking subgroup recommended at that time and the commission approved again unanimously, moving forward with a downtown parking program that included paid parking on the west side of Main Street. And I can't see my last bullet here. Um, and then in September of twenty twenty-four, the commission, um, approved the purchase of twenty pay stations. Um, since then, more recently, there were another ten that were approved. I think that was in, uh, December, if I remember, of twenty twenty-four. So that's sort of a high-level timeline of how we got here. Um, what I have up now is, um, one of the slides that resonates certainly most with me in understanding, um, the downtown parking program. So a parking study was done as part of the downtown vision master plan, which was part of how, um, the, the master plan landed on the recommendation to move forward with downtown paid parking. Um, so they did this study and you can see in this map here that there is a ton of demand on the west side of Main Street and less demand on the east side of Main Street. So if you look at the map that's in front of you with the dotted line, that's Main Street. Everything to the left is the west side of Main Street where the majority of businesses are. And to the right is the east side of Main Street. And so you can see that on that west side, parking is at eighty-six to one hundred percent capacity. That's the red blocks that you see there or seventy-one to eighty-five percent capacity largely. On the far side of Main Street, um, we are looking at parking that is at zero to fifty percent capacity or fifty-one to seventy percent capacity. So essentially to summarize, and our consultant can probably do a better job than I can, because all parking is treated essentially the same in downtown St. Joseph, everyone is trying to park in the exact same space, which is on the west side of Main Street, directly in front of the business that they are going to. And so you are seeing a lot of congestion and demand for specific places. Not a lack of actual capacity, but a lack of sort of spreading out the demand. Everyone's trying to go to the same place. Uh, one of the things that we learned as part of this process is that the ideal parking utilization is about eighty-five percent capacity. So you want your parking spaces to be used, of course, but you don't want it to be at one hundred percent capacity. You want about one available spot per block, um, at any given time so that when someone comes downtown, they can find a spot, pull in and park. Um, and when they're done, they move on and it frees up a space for someone else. Um, that's really the goal. Um, so a few challenges that were identified as parking, part of the, um, consultant's study. Um, first of all, no surprise to anyone in this room. Um, parking downtown has been an issue in the summer for years and years and years. Um, and one of the challenges is that downtown parking is often occupied by beachgoers or employees who spend most of their day parked downtown. They are not moving their vehicles, which means that turnover that I was mentioning earlier, um, is not created. Um, we also heard, um, the consultants heard as they were talking with, um, downtown businesses that the two-hour time limit, um, that we have in many of our parking lots is too short for many of our visitors. They want to come downtown, um, shop and have lunch or shop and have dinner or have dinner and ice cream. Um, one of the things I wouldn't have thought of, but they want to come downtown and get their hair done and that can take a while. Um, so we heard very clearly that two hours, um, is not enough time. We know Main Street is a barrier for pedestrians, making, uh, the east side of Main Street less desirable. Um, and the other thing that I think anyone who's ever parked downtown knows is that our infrastructure is in need of repairs. Um, I always say that there are potholes that you could literally lay down and take a nap in, although I don't advise it. Um, so there is, um, there is a need to improve that infrastructure. So, um, the objectives that came forward, um, are sort of divided up into four groups. The first is the objective for traffic. Um, so there's a goal to reduce traffic, um, and we think, and to reduce drivers searching for traffic. Um, driving down the block, not finding a space, turning, coming back around and doing it again, sort of circling. Um, the data that we, um, were provided is that up to thirty percent of cars in traffic are actually cruising for parking. Um, so what we want to do is encourage longer-term parkers to use lower-demand locations. Um, and of course, in, encourage the use of alternate modes of transportation where it makes sense to do so. For businesses, we want to increase turnover, which will impro, in, sorry, which will improve access to downtown businesses. Um, available parking is more attractive to customers. We hear all the time about people coming downtown in the summer, getting frustrated and driving off because they can't find parking. We want customers to be able to come downtown, find a place to park and then go, go enjoy our downtown. Um, and so part of that is extending on-street time limits, um, to address some of the concerns we heard and maintaining the thirty-minute free parking for the sort of quick in and out, which we know is relatively recent and people really enjoy. For locals, um, we want to move, um, who is paying for the parking system? Right now, city residents pay for parking through taxes. I mean, this stuff is not free. Um, shifting this model will mean that the users of downtown parking in the highest demand areas on the west side of Main Street will be the ones footing the bill for our parking area. Um, that means that the parking system, um, and all of the maintenance will become user-supported. It also means that the tax dollars that currently are being used downtown, which is limited because we do have potholes and other things, um, becomes available to redirect for other things. Um, so it's sort of reallocate some of those funds while making sure that we have even more investment in the downtown. Um, and then for everyone, we want to improve the experience of visiting downtown. We want to create a downtown that has more enhancements and less traffic. Um, we're going to streamline the parking system, making it easier to understand and then improve the downtown with dedicated investments. So just a quick overview, I know folks have seen this a number of times. Um, the proposal for the downtown parking program is that it would, there would be paid parking west of Main Street, May fifteenth to September fifteenth. Um, paid parking will only be in effect west of Main Street. East of Main Street will be free all year round. It would be in effect nine AM to nine PM daily. Um, on-street parking will be three hours max and the parking lots would be all day. Um, and I want to talk a little bit about what we've heard and the adjustments that we've made through this process because it has been, um, an ongoing dialogue. Um, so the first thing that we've heard, um, is that the season is too long. So the original proposal was April through October. The next proposal was early May through the end of September. Um, we talked to businesses who said, it's really not that busy. We had understood that there's a shoulder season that's longer than Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um, but businesses said it is not May first to the end of September. So we shortened it to May fifteenth to September fifteenth. Um, we increased the number of free parking spaces east of Main Street. One of the things that we heard is employees in particular are concerned that there wouldn't be enough free parking. Um, we reduced the number of short-term spaces, uh, that stretches just on the north side of parking lot eleven. We also worked with the box factory to get access to that lot, um, all summer, as well as the county to get access to the courthouse lot on nights and weekends. Um, we created a free waiver for downtown residents. So our understanding is that there are residents who live downtown who do not have dedicated parking, don't have any option other than to park in the city's parking lot, who have come to us and said, I don't want to pay to park all summer. Um, and we understand that. Um, and so we are working on developing and I know the commission has approved, um, going forward with a waiver program for residents who currently live downtown, who do not have access to private parking, um, to get a waiver for free parking downtown in the summers. Um, we created a similar free waiver for downtown employees who have mobility and financial limitations. One of the things we heard from businesses is I have employees who can't pay to park close to my, to my office or my store, um, but they also can't walk all the way from the other side of Main Street. So we want to create a waiver program to support them. Um, we are going to talk about it more later tonight, but we are proposing the creation of an ambassador program, which again was, um, approved by the city commission in the last meeting, um, where we discussed this. Um, to help introduce the process, we want to make sure that the rollout is smooth, that we're helping visitors, residents, anyone who's coming to the downtown, understand the program, understand how to use the machines or how to download the app. And also working closely with St. Joe today to make sure that they also hear as they're getting out of their car about all of the events that are happening downtown while they're here. We heard from the library that they had concerns, so we are reserving free parking for library guests, making it reserved just for people visiting the library, which doesn't exist right now. Um, we are also going to ensure that, um, folks who come downtown can buy day passes for multiple days of parking. Um, this was really driven by the Boulevard Hotel, which we know has people coming in for two nights, three nights, six nights, you know, whatever it is. We want to make sure that it's easy for them to purchase multi-day passes and not have to deal with it every day. But, you know, there are people who live downtown who have visitors. There are people who have, um, uh, short-term rentals downtown. There might be people who just want to buy multiple day passes to come downtown every day all weekend. Um, so we have made that available as well. Um, we're ensuring that, uh, you can purchase short increments of time, right? It's three-hour parking on street, it's all day in the lot, but maybe you really just need to pop in somewhere for fifteen minutes. So, uh, we're making sure that that increment is available. Um, we're also making sure that the parking program is flexible. So as you heard, there's a second reading of the, um, of the ordinance changes tonight, but there's also going to be a reading of a resolution. Um, the resolution will have sort of the nuts and bolts and details of the program. And the reason for that is that it is easier and faster to change. Um, so if there is a need to change, one of the things we heard from businesses especially, but also from residents is, well, what if it doesn't work? Well, we don't want it to have to go through two readings of an ordinance in ten days before a change can take effect. We will be monitoring. We do want to make sure we can make quick changes if we need to. Um, and then last but not least, I mentioned alternate modes of transportation. Um, the DDA just this morning approved funding for bike racks. So we'll also be installing, um, for the summer bike racks for anyone who doesn't want to drive downtown. Um, we don't have enough of those in our downtown and we want to make sure we add them. So that was all feedback-driven. We've been so appreciative of the feedback that we have gotten. Um, just a quick overview of our parking map. Um, there are over one thousand free parking spaces, um, that are on the east side of Main Street as well as sort of into the residential areas that we know a lot of employees and residents use. Um, and then in paid parking, we have just over eight hundred paid parking spaces, which again are west of downtown. Three hundred and seventy of those are three-hour parking spaces and four hundred and thirty of those are all-day spaces. Um, I think I mentioned this earlier, but there are two ways, uh, that folks can pay when they come downtown if they're parking on the west side. One is via mobile app, which folks are welcome to download. They can also use, um, a text code to just get a link. Um, they don't have to download the app if they don't want to. The benefit of downloading the app for someone who spends a lot of time downtown is that you can save your license plate number, you can save your credit card information, which makes it easier to sort of quickly put your payment in. There will also be pay stations, um, on every block and in every, uh, parking lot. And then, um, there's the parking benefits district, which again, we've talked about and I alluded to earlier. Um, the money that comes in, um, through the downtown parking program is designed to benefit the downtown. Um, Eric, our consultant from Walker, was very clear from the get-go and I have repeated this to anyone who will listen. You do not do a parking program for the revenues. You do a parking program for, um, addressing capacity challenges and the pain points that I started with. Um, however, there will be revenues and our downtown needs those revenues. There are, as I mentioned, potholes I could lay down and take a nap in. Um, being able to take that money and reinvest it in the downtown is essential. Um, so we have outlined a parking benefits district, um, that will ensure that eighty percent of the funds that come in stay in the downtown in the parking benefits district. Um, and you can see here what the anticipated revenue and expenses will be. This is again from the Walker Consultants' report. Um, net, uh, parking revenue, um, let's see. Gross parking revenue estimate is about eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. About a hundred thousand dollars a year in expenses, obviously a bit more in year one when we're investing in, um, purchasing the pay stations for the first time and getting them installed. But on an annual basis, we are looking at about six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, um, the vast majority of which would be reinvested. the vast majority of which would be reinvested into the downtown. So quickly, you know, we do have this incredible downtown vision master plan that the DDA, and I know the City Commission, is anxious to bring to life. So with those funds, we can certainly offset current downtown expenses, as I mentioned, which allows other city monies to go to other priorities. It will also allow the DDA and the City Commission to fund other enhancements. There are lots of designs that we have worked through for streetscape improvements, whether it's Broad Street or State Street or Pleasant Street. There's so much that we have envisioned doing. We want to make parking lot improvements. I have alluded to that a time or two. Like bluff park improvements. I think we've all been down that path that goes down, you know, with, I've certainly gone down it with a stroller. There's opportunity there. I won't go through all of these, but there are plenty of ways that that funding could have a really significant impact on the downtown. The last slide that I want to talk about, because it is always a question, is parking garage. The question always comes up, "Well, why aren't you just building a parking garage?" The biggest reason is that we don't believe that we have a capacity issue. We believe that the issue is a demand, that everyone's trying to go to the same place because there is no difference in pricing or hierarchy with the parking spaces. If we can spread out the capacity, we think there is sufficient parking. The other really big one is cost. You can see for a surface parking space, it's about $5,000 per space. For above-ground parking, it's about $30,000 per space. And for underground parking, it's about $75,000 per space. It is a huge investment. It is also, as I understand from our expert, the lowest-demand parking. When people are looking for a place to park, their priority is to park on the street. That is where psychologically, people want to park. The next priority is to park on a surface parking lot. It is the lowest priority to park in a parking garage. So what we would end up doing if we did move forward with a parking garage is spending a ton of money on a place that would not be the highest demand and could end up being underutilized, unutilized, as well as cost a lot of money for ongoing maintenance. So that's my whole overview. I know everyone's heard this a time or two. Eric is here to answer questions, if you have any. Otherwise, we can go on to the next agenda item. I defer to you guys.
There's no action on this one.
No action on this one.
Refresh. Any questions on the refresh, or should we just go right into the action items?
I just have a, I guess, a comment slash question. As people may or may not be aware, there is some activity and interest by some developers in property downtown. Some of those include city lots. And that's a dynamic that's going to make this plan continue to evolve. And I just think it would be prudent, maybe not at tonight, but at some point in the near future, that we adopt some type of metric for how we replace parking lots we lose or parking spaces we lose.
Yeah.
Some kind of type of formula. So it's not left to a future commission to deal with that. I think we put some kind of a framework in place that can certainly be amended down the road, but at least it's been thought of in advance.
That's great.
I think it's just worth, you know, restating how this, you know, fits in with what St. Joe could look like five to 10 years from now, right? You know, as you mentioned, the purpose of paid parking is, you know, to fix, you know, to fix the symptom that we have plenty of capacity. As the data shows, it's just moving where people are parking and then changing some habits to have that net effect of increasing availability so that our businesses down there get more customers. And more customers for them means that those businesses will do better. And, you know, how that plays into the revenues getting reinvested into making it even more, which in an ideal world will lead to even more attractions and more reason for wanting to come to St. Joe. The way that this fits into where we need to be thinking five to 10 years down the future, you know, is why I've supported this thus far. And it's not the only thing that we have going on that's on, you know, this theme. The other big component is, you know, Main Street. And there's ongoing discussions about how that's going to be getting redone in two years. And I think tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, is a listening session. So it's a perfect opportunity to have, you know, direct public input onto what that Main Street reconstruction looks like. It's already been a year in the making, and it's just a couple of years away. So that plays a part into what St. Joe will look like five to 10 years down the road, so.
And I think I just want to say that we are partnering with businesses and residents because we all have a vision for what we want the downtown to be. And I think this vision will help us to see that not only will you have increased business in the summer, but I think it will spread to a 12-month year of businesses having more increase in visitors. That is the vision. That's what the Downtown Vision Plan was all about. And I think if we partner together to create this vision together, then we can do this together. And as we've seen, we've listened to you, we've changed things, we've modified, we've tried to do what we can to hear what you're saying, and we'll continue to do that. I was downtown today talking to businesses and trying to figure out what, and it was, you know, was, "We need more bicycles." And the DDA just had just approved, or bicycle racks, I'm sorry. The DDA had just approved it because she's planning to have, you know, ride or bike to work sometimes. So as we go on, we're going to continue to talk to you and see, and we can always modify things as we go.
I think the thing to highlight in this presentation as well that's really important is the way that this is malleable to the future, especially within our ability to make a resolution to change this. It is no secret that this downtown parking, the point that we're at now did not just happen in six months, in a year. This is decades of work. But it's, I think it's important to know that any change that we need to make to make this work for businesses and residents is not going to take another 10, 15 years. It's a resolution, and we're able to be flexible because of that.
Any other comments before we move on to the next item? No? All right. Well, then that moves us along to item number 16, Downtown Parking Program Ordinance Amendment Parking Regulation Second Reading.
What you have before you next is the second reading for the ordinance for downtown parking. This was approved at the first reading on February 24th. And I do want to point out there were some minor edits that were made to the proposed ordinance from the time you saw it before. There is a redline version for that. The two minor edits are to Section 2938, subsection B, adding the word "streets" and "area" to just clarify what that section refers to. There was also a provision in the, in Section 29-21B that restricted all-night street parking downtown on Saturday and Sunday. And that was removed to be consistent with the longstanding practice of allowing that all-night parking on the street. It was only pertaining to the downtown district. That has not been enforced for a long, long time. So we needed to clean that up and not have something remain in there that was not really in existence. So if the commission's still in agreement with this, the request would be to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 29 as presented.
Any questions? What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance and to amend Chapter 29, Article 2, Sections 29 through 21, through 29 through 45 of the City of St. Joseph Code of Ordinances as presented.
Support.
Any public comment on this matter?
Good evening, city staff and city commissioners. My name is Paul Knapp, and I serve as the Executive Director of St. Joe Today and 301 State Street. And I am also a member of the Parking Subcommittee. So I've spent the last year gaining an intimate perspective of each side of this issue. And I do understand and recognize the negative sentiment towards the program. So change can be challenging, and the idea of paid parking, especially for our downtime employees, feels like an added burden. And I'm sure it's difficult for those employees to trust that we have heard that feedback. But we have. The Subcommittee also acknowledges the difficulties in adjusting established routines and the potential for increased personal expenses. But please know that these considerations have been central to our discussions. We must also address the critical issue impacting the vitality of downtown. Parking availability for our visitors is key. Our businesses thrive on an influx of tourists and local patrons. All too often, they circle blocks frustrated by the lack of open spaces, many of which are occupied for the entire workday. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a deterrent. And it means lost revenues for shops, restaurants, and attractions, which are the very heart of our community. This new program, I believe, is designed with a clear purpose, to prioritize customer access to our downtown parking. By implementing a reasonable paid parking structure, the Subcommittee aims to encourage employees who have alternative options, such as carpooling, biking, walking, or utilizing the many free spaces that downtown will still offer in order to free up those prime, easily accessible spots for the very people who fuel our local economy. The Subcommittee believes that this shift, while requiring some adaptation, is a necessary investment in the long-term health and prosperity of downtown St. Joe. Increased customer access directly translates to more business, more vibrancy, and a stronger economic base for everyone. This isn't about penalizing our employees or residents. It's about ensuring our downtown remains a welcoming and accessible destination for all. This is a collaborative effort. And while the initial transition may present some hurdles, I'm confident that the strategic move will ultimately be a significant net win. We understand that any change requires trust and a belief in a shared positive outcome. This parking program isn't simply about fees and revenues. It's about fostering a more accessible and thriving downtown to everyone. And by working together with understanding and a spirit of collaboration, we can make this transition a success. This program, implemented thoughtfully and with ongoing dialogue, has the potential to strengthen our community for the benefit of residents, employees, and visitors alike. So I would encourage us to approach this with a collective good, with the collective good in mind, and confidence that a more accessible downtown is a stronger downtown for all of us.
Thank you.
Jessica Chabot, 403 State Street, Unit 4. And I have a couple of questions. As far as your overview going over, and it's been pointed out to you several times, you had locals on there, but there was no addressing the actual residents. And I see that the parking experts are here and such, and there's never been, as far as I know, I'm the president of our condo association, that no one's asked us how many parking spaces we need for 24-hour parking. In my opinion here, from just everybody I know, you don't have enough 24-hour spots for those of us who have to put our car somewhere. In your amendment here, you're saying, "Okay, on Friday and Saturday, it's okay to park overnight." Well, guess what? The people who live here also need to park their car on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We got to put our car somewhere. And you still have not addressed that. When that, when those 40 spaces are full, where do you want us to put our car?
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Sarah Spoonholz. I'm Director of Membership and Events for the Fox International Chamber at 811 Ship Street here in downtown St. Joe. I initially was going to share many of the same comments that Paul shared. While we understand this is a very delicate situation, not necessarily one that has not, very delicate, let me just stop right there and say very delicate. I do want to take a moment to just applaud the commission, as well as Emily, and the entire team that is working on the paid parking for listening to the businesses. We understand that change is difficult. We understand that it is going to be an adjustment. It is going to be a difficult time. As someone who was born and raised here in southwest Michigan, I can attest for the last 20 years, there have been many days where I have gone into frustration, as many visitors have. I also happen to be on the receiving end of many visitors who come into our community, who get frustrated, who get incredibly angry, and who call and take it out on me and/or someone else from our office because there was confusion about the time limits on parking when they go into effect because merchants are telling them one thing, or as the actual information is another thing. So my hope is that actually this will help clear a lot of things up. I believe, though, there's a lot of work. There's a lot of discussions that still need to be had. But again, I applaud you for taking a lot of the information that has been given to you to try and make it work with the businesses in the downtown. And I would just encourage the businesses to please understand, and even the residents as well, that yes, this is a first time that's going to be happening through the summer, but this is going to be an ongoing process. There will be changes that are made as things happen, as Commissioner Cirilla pointed out, with properties that are potentially sold or developed. So please just keep an open mind. And please remember that more gets done when you actually collaborate versus coming at somebody angrily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Kelly Wilson, I own perennial accents in town. Actually, there hasn't been a lot of collaboration with a lot of businesses. Being an anchor store in town, no collaboration, no asking of opinion or anything. I had to seek out to give that, which I, everyone up here knows I've given it very freely. But there's been a couple of comments made that I would love to see come from this. One is that we're hoping to change habits of our customers. But that would require us having regular customers. And what we get are seasonal customers, and those change every year. And so we're not going to be able necessarily to take the same pot of people and change their habits. We will with some, because we do get a lot of repeats, thank goodness. But we do have a lot of new. So it'll be new for people all of the time and figuring it out. But I do understand we have some beautiful signage coming that'll give some direction with that. I do not believe this is going to help us get year-round business. It's not going to change the fact that we are seasonal. And our season starts Memorial Day weekend, not May 15th. And it ends really hardly Labor Day, as far as our guest influx into town. And it's our locals that carry us the rest of the year. And I don't know how many of you are following the Facebook post. I happen to, because my crowd follows me on Facebook because my audience happens to be over 50. And the comments literally, and I haven't responded to them because I don't know how to say it without sounding snarky. But when I hear locals say, "I'm not coming downtown," it makes my skin crawl because I'm like, "You may be mad at the city, but you're going to kill your businesses if you don't come downtown." And those are the ones that are going to lose. And then you're not going to have a downtown. And we hear that constantly. And if you listen, you'll hear that constantly. And Paul, you pointed out at the St. Joe Today meeting, we heard from 2,000 of our constituents that, you know, parking is an issue. And I feel like saying, "Can we stop and have a moment?" Parking is what our people said was our issue, not crime, not public indecency because we have people in wet bathing suits that need to strip down and put on dry clothes. And it's not litter, and it's not these horrible things. It's the fact, sorry, I take medication that drives me out. It's the fact that about 12 weekends a year, it's packed here. And that's a great problem to have. And if our guests ride around and can't find a parking place, then maybe they'll learn to plan better. That's not a bad problem to have. And there is parking. You just have to go out a little bit further to get it, just like we have to. But to tell a business owner or to tell a server who shows up at 4 o'clock who can't take advantage of the courthouse or anything, they got to walk to their car with $400 cash? Guys, it's going to be a problem. And there will be an isolated issue, unfortunately. And then what are we going to do? So.
That's three minutes.
Yeah. So decades of work. This city plan was created 2016. That was pre-COVID. It is another, another world today in business. So I question whether, how hard we have to stick.
Thank you.
Do you all mind if I show you something on my phone?
Sure.
It's going to come up kind of close. See that right there? Says pay. Everybody see that? See that? My dad is in a physical therapy rehab center, and I had to go down there. I know this parking lot very well. That's my car. So you see that? That's my car. That blue thing, that blue thing. That blue thing, that's the sign I just showed you. Okay? So it's right there. Okay? So this is the Emory University Village. And it was built years ago, and I remember when it was built. And it is three levels. First level is businesses. It's kind of a quad, like in a college, but it has parking spaces, obviously. The first level is all businesses, restaurants, shops. The second level is apartments, second, third floor is apartments, but it's for resident, like resident doctors at Emory University. Okay, when they built this, they didn't have paid a park. And we used to go down there and eat all the time. All the college kids was down there. So we drove back, we're going to go visit my dad. Took my wife, we drove by, drove through. All the restaurants are gone, except for like two. Okay? Now, the point of the story is actually, when I pulled in, what was behind that sign was the CBS. I had to go get my dad some stuff, toothbrush, toothpaste, whatever for his staying in the facility. First thing it did is made me think of this, this incident we're going through. Pulled in, got in my car, went into CBS, spent about 30 minutes. I didn't queue or go. I didn't, I didn't pay. I wasn't going to pay. I was waiting to come out and see a ticket on my card. I didn't care. Had a Michigan tag, this is Atlanta, Georgia. I'll wait and see if something comes in the mail. But I'm not paying. I wasn't going to pay. So now, how many times you're going to get somebody that's as abstinent as me or as angry as I was pulling up here and saying, screw it, I'm not paying? And Kelly got me to ask y'all that question. If you had an exit strategy? Well, I've been doing some calculating. You say it's going to cost 100 grand to implement. So divide that by the month. I think I came up with some preliminary numbers of $6,000 a day. Y'all going to make him park it? Okay. What are you going to do when you don't make $6,000 a day? What are you going to do when you say, hey, we're going to make 800,000, and you make 50,000 for the entire season? Because word gets out, I'm not going to St. Joe and pay to park. I talked to more people than y'all do. And every person I've ever said anything to said, I'm sorry, I'm not coming downtown. And I told you the last time, it's going to be full, and you guys are going to be making money, and everybody's going to be at Silver Beach, and nobody's going to be in our businesses. Or every parking space is going to be empty because they're like me, saying, I'm not paying to park. I'm not going there. I'm going to Douglas, I'm going to Sagittuck, I'm going to New Buffalo. And then you're not making any money. And we certainly aren't. And what's going to happen is, by the time you guys realize this is an abject failure, we've already gone away. And you haven't been in the stores. He's the only one. You brought his son in one day, wanted to talk to Kelly, she wasn't there. Haven't seen you, haven't seen you, haven't seen you. I've only seen you at the grocery store. So don't sit up there and tell us that you're talking to people. Because I talked to people, I talked to people at the G and M today, and they all said, this thing sucks. I mean.
That's three minutes.
You're not listening. We got, we got two problems here. We got two sets of deaf ears. Y'all's deaf ears, you aren't listening to anybody here. Okay? That's your deaf ears. Our deaf ears are what you're saying, we're not, we don't like it. And we're not, we're not listening to you.
Thank you.
You're not representing the people. That's your job, Mike. It's not to use your brain, figure out a solution. When you throw out, hey, here's a solution, and everybody says, it's terrible? Then you do something different. If we say no, you say no.
Thank you.
Say yes, you say yes. That's representative.
Any other public comment? Hearing no more public comment, please.
How's everybody doing this evening? I commented the last time, my name's Tom Gallic. I actually have been a permanent resident here for 13 years or so. And I'm currently the chairman of the Downtown Development Authority. I'm a finance guy by background. So I tend to look at these things unemotionally, kind of black and white, frankly. And what I said to the commissioner last time we talked about this is, I see this really as a, as a money problem. I really do. The reality is, this city has very few sources to get revenue, very few. Real estate taxes is by far the majority of the money that we, we take in to cover all the bills that make the city go. Make the streets work, public safety, fix the potholes, clean up downtown, do whatever you want to do. That's the reality of it. This proposal is meant to try and provide an alternate source of revenue to help us with all that. Because there really is nowhere else to go. So all of us as taxpayers, everybody that lives here, we pay for this one way or the other. So the question is, are we going to get help to do that or not? We have tens of thousands of visitors coming in every year. I don't know what the number is, but it's massive. And essentially, to help support our infrastructure, they, in reality, don't pay anything. We pay for it. Every one of you that's a taxpayer here, including me, pays for it. So when ultimately, there's a situation where we want to make improvements to downtown, or we want to repave a parking lot, or we want to fill a pothole, it's going to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from real estate taxes. It's the only place to go. So the question for me, as a taxpayer, for getting aside all the other things I'm involved in is, you know, is it okay to pay a few bucks, few bucks for parking periodically? Sure, I'll pay that if you stay away from my real estate taxes. It's as easy as that for me. You know, all the other discussion about, you know, where to park and where not to park and what are employees going to do? My sense is people have kind of figured that out. They'll figure it out in this situation. This is a well-thought-out plan. This is not something that's going out there willy-nilly. When my wife worked at Butler University and the parking lot, I've made this comment a few times. The president of the university said, you know what? We don't have a parking problem. We have a walking problem. And when you look at the compact nature of our downtown, if you think it's an ordeal to walk from this parking lot to a business that's two blocks away, I don't know, I can't help you. Frankly, I can't help you. And I can't help some employee in that regard. I'm not trying to be cavalier about it, but I really think this is something that's been well-thought-out. It's well-organized. It's going to be flexible. If we need to make changes, we'll make those changes. But I think we need to move forward on this basis. Or otherwise, we're going to have to find other places to get money. Thank you.
Thank you. We got another one? Thank you.
I'm Karen Lutz at 2606 Old Lake Shore. I have something that's just really specific to the ordinance amendment in section 29-21 on all-night street parking. I'm just curious if there is any restriction on Whitwam Drive? Because I noticed there is no parking between the hours of 2:30 and 6:00 a.m. But they don't, the signs that are there don't specify Monday through Friday. And I noticed the signs on Lake Boulevard specify Monday through Friday, but on Whitwam, they don't. So if, if there's no restriction there, then those signs should probably be updated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dottie Scott. I property manager for Mr. Mark, 515 State Street, known as MGM Apartments. My concern is, if I have a tenant move out, the new resident will not get a place to park or a parking pass unless they're disabled or a senior. Is that correct? Does anyone know?
I'm Tiam.
That is correct?
Yes. The proposal is for existing tenants to get a waiver and tenants who move in once the program is in effect would not. I did have a conversation recently with Brian Barrett about that. And we talked about sitting down with the two of you and other landlords about what might make sense over the next few years. But as it is currently proposed, that is the plan.
That the new resident won't get a parking pass?
Correct.
Isn't that kind of discriminatory?
There are still some handicap passes that would be available if somebody has a handicap sticker from the state. And then there's another waiver program that Emily had mentioned earlier. If, actually, I think that was for her.
No, that's correct. So I want to look to the mayor on how much response she wants here. But there would also be a program, similar to what I mentioned for downtown employees with mobility and financial limitations. There will also be a program for downtown residents who rely on public parking with financial and mobility limitations.
Yeah, it would just seem fair to me that you would not have to meet both of those qualifications.
You don't have to meet both.
Whether it's low income or disability, would seem to make more sense. If you qualified for one of those, you would get your waiver. I mean, this gentleman right here has rented at MGM for 22 years and has been a frequent visitor of downtown. Now, one block, some people say there may be a walking problem. That could well be true. But this gentleman is challenged to walk a block. So, you know, it just, it's disturbing. My, my father bought MGM Apartments, little history lesson, about 1970. It's the old Hatfield Apartments. The city was ready to demolish that building. My dad took the building in disrepair and literally went unit by unit, remodeled the entire building, 1970, 1971. And the city was very happy to give a handful of parking spaces to the MGM residents, regardless of who was moving in or moving out. Because she's already had people say, if I have to pay to park, I'm not, I'll go find another apartment.
Thank you. And, and I think with the three minutes being up, if you have more dialogue that you want to have with city staff, you're more than welcome to kind of ask some more of these questions that you have. And this, this public comment is more for public comment. So, thank you.
Just a little extra consideration would be nice.
Yeah, thank you.
For the new residents coming in. Yeah.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Stephanie Grohl, I own 615 Broad Street, also on the DDA. I would just thought, suggest that if the existing residents were to get a pass, that a new resident would also get one. And that, I mean, the issue that, when this all came up was the beachgoers and the employees were taking up the parking for the businesses. To me, I think the time could be shortened. And I think we should, you know, perhaps listen to the, the season is shorter than it should be more memorial to labor, to Labor Day. And I think it, it doesn't make any sense to have it go until 9 o'clock at night. To me, there's nobody coming to the beach, and employees have already parked. It would seem to me, it would maybe stop at 6, 5 or 6. But that's my suggestion.
Thank you. I saw someone else making their way up here.
Hi, my name is Gary Smothers. I was just, wanted clarification on if, like, I own a condo downtown, and so there's a pass, I get that. If I sell my condo, does a person I sell it to, who will then pay city taxes, will they get a pass?
Sure. Yep.
So that's the same scenario that Dottie was just asking about. As the policy is currently drafted, it would not. So what the parking subgroup recommended was that the folks who rented an apartment or bought a condo, assuming free parking, which has been the case for years and years, should not be penalized. The parking subgroup, however, recognized that there will be turnover. And should you sell your condo three years down the line when there is paid parking, someone new moving in would be moving in, purchasing and moving in, understanding that there is paid parking in the downtown. They would be moving in in a different environment.
Yeah, but you know, okay. Thing, I don't agree with that with.
We can't hear him. We can't hear him.
And so, again, I'm happy to have conversations about that. I just spoke with someone recently about, you know, what that looks like. But that is how the parking subgroup has currently recommended it.
Okay, I understand that now. I can get, I guess, if you own a condo or property down there, you're the one paying the taxes. So it would seem like, from the prior discussion, that that should pass on because if you were to build a new condo down there, then I suppose that person wouldn't get one either. Somebody would construct a new condo down there, that person would also not get it. But they would be paying the taxes.
Right. I think the parking subgroup didn't think of it on the basis of the taxes so much as the basis of having moved in at a time when parking was free and then having that change, right?
Yeah, but taxes are kind of, are, I, I, to me, they do have a, they should have some significance if you're actually paying city taxes compared to anyone else that's not paying city taxes. So that's just my point.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Other public comment? Okay.
A gentleman gentleman just spoke about his condo and having to sell it. And then the person that buys it would have to pay to park. And as a Realtor, I can tell you right away, that will not happen. His sale will be blown right out of the water.
Thank you. Any others? All right.
Good evening. My name's Larry Zank. I am a condo owner as well in St. Joe. Two things have struck me that seems unfair. Being a resident, of course, throwing out the adage of being a taxpayer should give me some, some rights. One of those rights should be, if I rent my apartment, accordance to the laws here in St. Joe, I should also be able to provide my tenant with a parking pass as part of the lease. That just seems to be the, the way that I see that. I just had a guy who rented for the last two years. He left. His lease expired. And one of the reasons why, he noted that the parking was a part of the reason because he didn't want his relatives, his family, his sons and daughters to come and visit and have to have that burden of parking, the parking fee. So that kind of hit, hit home. The second thing that I thought was really interesting, how are you going to collect delinquent parking fees? If I decide to park in St. Joe, I live in Chicago? Hey, I'm not going to pay. How do you do that? Do you pay on the spot with your credit card? Is that how it works? Or are you going to be like a toll road where in the mail, I'm going to get something down the road? So I commend you on the hard work. This first time I've been here, I've heard tidbits through the last couple of weeks or months. I commend you on your work. There's a lot of due diligence. But I think there's still some things that need to be tweaked. And if you listen to the groans, I think the one the gentleman mentioned about if he was going to sell his condo and the new owner would not be provided with a parking permit, that doesn't even seem like it's a logical assessment. I mean, he's now a resident. He's now a taxpayer. I mean, he, he fits all of the parameters to get that, that parking. So I don't know why you would not, you'll probably have to consider that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Can I, I just want to say one thing before we-
Can I, I just want to say one thing before we vote. If you go back to the page of all of the feedback that we got and all of the things we changed, 10 of them, 10 items, then I think that you'll recognize that we want to work with you. So we are not saying these are set in stone. We are going to continue to work with you as this proceeds, and we will constantly be reevaluating. You can come to us and tell us how things are going. It's going to be something that we want to partner with you to do. But since we've already addressed 10 issues, you can see that we're willing to work with you.
And as another member of the parking committee, this is, this is what we want. We want the public comment. We want the feedback, so we can make this something that works for everybody. We're not trying to say, this is what we're doing, we're not having any feedback. I've said the whole time, this program is very tweakable, and we will continue to tweak it as we go along. We're going to keep our subcommittee intact, so that as these things come up, we can pivot. And this stuff is a lot. There's a lot of items on here that we're taking action on. We purposely made it so that it's very easy to pivot quickly. We didn't make it so that, you know, we want to make a change, well, we have to do 15 steps to make that change. We made it, the wording such, so that when we need to make that pivot, we can do that on a staff level without having so much work to do. So I think, to echo your sentiment, there's been a lot of good work. We've made a lot of changes, and we will continue to do so to make sure it makes sense for everybody.
I have a question. Are you, we're done, Michelle? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Because I want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on. And there's a lot of nuance to this. I'm not on the parking subcommittee, so a lot of this is just seen from three days ago when we got the agenda.
What you're voting on?
Yeah, so, so I just want to make sure, because a lot of this, as challenging as it is, I think we have to give it a try. But there are a couple of things that I just can't process, and I need to better understand. And this lady raises a point, and I just want to make a, get a clarification. Where are residents supposed to park overnight, was her question. And my question is, or my assumption is, they can pay to park overnight somewhere, but not guaranteed to be where they want to be. Is that, is that correct or not correct?
So, I'm looking for... So, the downtown residents who currently rely on public parking use public parking all day and all night, and the overnight parking will not change. It will be free parking, and so anyone who is a downtown resident who gets that waiver will be able to continue to park overnight in any of the downtown lots.
Okay.
On the east or west side of Main Street.
Does that answer your question? Did you understand that before?
You're not. You would get a...
Like, how many people in our, my household has four vehicles? I mean, how many passes do we get? What does it do to qualify for you being a resident? I'm not really hearing any concrete answers on how you want us to, I mean, pay or not pay. It's like, okay, well, our car has to go somewhere, and I'm not hearing clear answers on that.
Okay. Want to answer that?
I am happy to answer it. So, there are, just to take a step back, the way that the parking subgroup has approached this is that there are changes to the ordinance which are required. We are then doing a lot of the specifics via resolution, which is the next agenda item. And then beyond that, there are policies for each of these programs that I spoke about. And so those policies will be finalized sort of, once the commission has weighed in on the ordinance changes and the resolution, and we get all of that knocked out, the policies will contain those specifics. And so they will be shared. They will be shared with downtown residents as it relates to the policy for a waiver for downtown residents. I will be happy to share that with you once we have it all hammered out. It will obviously have to be a very quick turnaround. But the idea is that anyone who is in the downtown area, who does not have their own private parking, would be able to park at least one vehicle per resident in the downtown parking lots. I do not have those policies final. I will make sure that we are coordinating.
Okay, can we work on another? Yeah, yeah. I think that information is to come. Did you have more clarification?
Yeah, I have one more question. Regarding MGM or this gentleman's condo, where he's either going to sell it, or the tenant, a new tenant that would come in, it's, they seem to be implying that it would be, the new tenants would not have a place to park, or the new owner of the condo would not have a place to park. They can buy a place to park, right? It just doesn't come free with the unit. Is that correct?
That's correct. The downtown lots would be either free or all, or paid, but both all-day lots. And so, yes, someone who wanted to park in the city public lots could do so all day, either for free or paid, depending on which lot was selected.
And the overnight, after nine till nine, is free anywhere?
Correct.
Other questions from the commission? Okay, we're going to call it to a vote. Abby? Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. We are on item number 17 now. That is the Downtown Parking Program Resolution. Yes.
Correct. So, the ordinance to amend Chapter 29 was just approved for the second reading. It takes effect 10 days from today. That provided the overview. Some of the details are now in the resolution to establish that. The ordinance, again, as we discussed earlier, is kind of the basic framework that allows the city commission to establish by resolution spaces or zones within the city where parking on streets or in the city-owned or city-operated off-street parking lots can be regulated by time limits, parking meters or other controls, and also by the resolution, any time limits or rates to be charged for parking in those locations, and some of the allowing a waiver or permit program. So, those details are in the resolution in a more full fashion, and then some of the programmatic details, as Emily mentioned earlier, would be policy. But the key components of the parking program are in the resolution, and I will kind of lay those out for you. We've talked about them this evening already quite a bit. But what the proposal in the resolution is follows along with what Emily presented earlier from the parking subgroup, and that would be that the parking fees in the parking benefits district would be in effect from May 15th through September 15th, from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 a.m. And, excuse me, the rates are established. In the parking lots west of Main Street, the rates would be $1 per hour per space with no hourly time limit. East of Main Street, the parking lots would be free, and for the most part, those would be all day, except Parking Lot 11 across the street would have a three-hour parking space in the row that's north, next to the building. The street parking west of Main Street would have no less than 13 free 30-minute parking spaces that allows for the quick access to some of the downtown destinations in the locations that would be determined by the city manager. All other parking on the street west of Main would be at the rate of $2 per hour, and the time limit there would be for three hours. On and east of Main Street, there would be no less than two free 30-minute limited parking spaces, and all other parking on the street east of Main and on Main Street would be free, and it's limited to three hours. All the overnight parking restrictions, such as they are, would still remain in full effect. There would be no parking fees at all charged September 16th through May 14th, but the time limits would still continue. The resolution also gives the city manager, in collaboration with the parking subgroup, a direction to develop, implement, and administer the details of a program. And that would include appropriate time intervals, payment methods, and the mechanism for accepting the payment options, signage, and the various communication methods. It also includes monitoring and evaluation criteria, which, again, we've talked about quite a bit today, and other necessary program details. The resolution also provides that the city manager, in collaboration with the parking subgroup, would administer guidelines, applications, and processes to provide the multi-day passes that were discussed, market rate employee passes, and other programs, specifically including waivers for current residents who live within that district, and employees of a business or an entity in the parking benefits district who have limited financial means and physical difficulties that would require them to be close to their place of employment. It also directs that the city manager, excuse me, should designate free parking spaces for patrons of the library, and that no less than 80% of the revenue derived from the parking program, less all the associated expenses, would be allocated to improvements in the district, such as maintenance and improvement of the parking lots, alleys, and streets. And the city manager is directed to evaluate the parking program along with the subgroup on an ongoing basis and regularly report back to the city. So that was incorporating the recommendations in the parking program. The resolution is something that the city commission would approve. If there are changes, you could certainly discuss those tonight as well. But the flexibility that was discussed a little bit tonight is that if some of those main program details would be changed, the city commission would be able to do that with one meeting, obviously getting feedback from the city manager and the parking subgroup to do that, but it wouldn't require the two separate meetings with the 10 days to be effective later. So it's designed to, to give some oversight and parameters to it, but also allow for some flexibility if changes are desired in the future.
Thank you. All right. Questions on this item?
I guess one last thing is this would be effective. Sorry, this is the legal part again. This would be effective at the same time the ordinance is, so it would be a 10-day delay period.
I move to approve the resolution to establish parking zones, rates, fees, time limits, and parking benefits district as presented, effective 10 days from approval.
I support. Any public comment on this matter? Okay. Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item number 18 is now the Downtown Parking Program Downtown Ambassador. Over here, okay.
Good evening. So, now that it's passed, we know that the rollout of downtown parking needs to go smoothly. And just in discussions that we've had with numerous people, this smooth rollout is essential. So, even though we've had the pay stations and passport app at the beaches for a few years, we assume there's going to be some people visiting downtown that may not be familiar with it. So in order to mitigate any potential confusion, we'd like to hire full and part-time seasonal staff to act as ambassadors downtown, who'll spend time explaining the parking program, assisting with any questions on the pay stations in the app, and helping to maintain the pay stations, replacing paper, working with St. Joe Today. They're also expected to give information on activities and events also with St. Joe Today that's going on in the city and just provide general direction. Just being kind of the friendly face downtown and being helpful, you know, to visitors. The ambassadors will not be performing any enforcement, so they will not be doing tickets. They will not be, you know, they're just there to be helpful. The program is going to be directly supervised by the Downtown Ambassador Coordinator, who will be a full-time employee with benefits at a rate of $21 an hour, which is at 25 hours a week. The ambassadors will be paid a rate of $18 an hour, excuse me, and their schedules are going to vary based on availability. It's going to just depend on who we can get hired and their availability being part-time. The hope is to hire six to eight ambassadors with flexible schedules, six to eight hours a day, just again, depending on need. So the total request is for $55,000, which will be reimbursed through the Downtown Parking Program revenues using the Downtown Budget Line, Downtown Parking Budget Line.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions on this item?
We talked a little bit about it, but I just wanted to reemphasize, I mean, albeit the reason is to help navigate this change, but there's a lot of other things, you know, that these downtown ambassadors, partnership with St. Joe Today can really help to highlight a lot of the things to do. Where should I eat? Where should I go? All of those things, and that will be beneficial to the downtown.
I have had the pleasure of participating in Michigan Downtown Association conferences and trainings and other events, and downtown ambassadors are strongly encouraged, and many downtowns do it, completely separate from any kind of paid parking program. I am really excited about what the downtown ambassadors can do, just generally, especially with the partnership with St. Joe Today, to promote all the great things that we have downtown.
All right.
I move to approve... Let's see, I had a question first.
This is probably hard to answer, but just, our outlook on this position, would this be a yearly, like, would we keep, I didn't say that correctly. What I'm trying to say is, is this position, obviously we're approving it now for summer 2025, what would be, do you think this would keep going?
I think right now, it would just be seasonal, so the May to September period.
Oh, I mean, like, '26, '27, like, that's, sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
I think that's TBD. I mean, again, I think it is a best practice. There will be revenues coming in from the parking program, and I think there is a question that I know has been presented to the DDA, and will probably come to the city commission as well, on how to prioritize those, right? There are needs downtown. Where do we start? I don't think that we would necessarily need the level of presence that we are doing for this summer, but it would be a lovely thing to have. I guess it's a long way of not giving a real answer.
I don't think that was like a real question. I didn't expect a hard answer. I just wanted to know what kind of the thought process was behind it, and what we expect out of that position.
And then, further to that question, is the coordinator a seasonal position as well?
So, the coordinator is someone that has worked with the city for many years overseeing the reserve program, and this summer, he will oversee both programs. Steve, he is seasonal, isn't he? So he is already seasonal. He is someone who's worked with us for quite some time, and he'll have two teams under him this year.
So, it'll be, it'll mirror the parking season, his employment?
I can't speak for the reserve program, but for this side of it, yes. That's exactly right.
Could this grow into something more, if we identify more needs in the downtown? Maybe people just do want, outside of parking, where's the public bathroom, St. Joe Today? People don't, not everybody knows that kind of thing, but maybe we start to identify more things that the public does need to know and still be used for those other needs outside of parking. Okay, cool.
I move to approve the Downtown Ambassador Program as described, and hire full and part-time employees to fill the roles for the 2025 season.
I support. Any public comment on this item? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 19 is noxious weed ordinance. You got that. Laurie's got that. Great.
So, this is the second reading for the noxious weed ordinance. On March 17th, the city commission reviewed the changes to Chapter 31, the Code of Ordinances, and the changes, just as a reminder, to the noxious weed ordinance included prohibiting invasive species, like Japanese knotweed, adopting the list of prohibited plant species under the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The one thing that the Sustainability Committee weighed in on was asking that milkweed and goldenrod be removed from the list of noxious weeds due to their importance to the monarch butterfly population and pollinator populations. And it also provides clear responsibility for who's to eradicate the noxious weeds, and outlines the city's ability to abate it as a nuisance, and assess costs, and describes the penalties for the violations. So, there have been no changes from the first reading, and the request is to approve it for a second reading.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 31, Article 2, Noxious Weeds, Section 16 through 31, 22, as presented.
Support.
Support.
Public comment on this item? All right. Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number twenty, resolution system, city water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay. So last meeting, we had Jacque Cizer from the school, and next time we give a study session presentation. That presentation is attached, as well as the agenda item from last time. The overview is we have three water funds. We have the system water fund, which is the plant, and then that revenue is also collected for the townships at the same rate. And that rate was approved by the WSGOB last meeting in February nineteenth. And then we have the city sewer fund, which is city only, although each other entity also has a sewer fund, and the city water fund, which is city water funnel, so three rates. We are proposing to increase the rates, the system water rate by five percent, the city water rate by seven, and the sewer rate by thirteen. And there's a chart in the agenda packet. The typical user uses like nine thousand gallons or thereabouts. Their bill will go from two hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents to two hundred and twenty-one thousand and thirty-two cents. So even though the rates themselves are increasing by amount, because we have the flat fees plus the usage per unit usage fee, their increase will be about nine point one percent, the typical user.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? Is it a continuation of a study session?
Yeah. No. The study session was very beneficial to help me understand all this background, so thank you for that.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve as part of the, oh, is this a consent?
No.
Oh, I moved to approve as part of the agenda, the following resolution is presented, adapting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year system waters, city water and sewer rates effective for the July first, twenty twenty-five billing cycle.
Support. Any public comment on the matter? All right. Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one, CSO flow monitoring proposal. We got two.
Emily's going to call up a PowerPoint because without pictures, this is kind of hard to follow, so. Okay, there we go. So city staff is requesting to hire Waytrim to conduct flow monitoring, CSO flow monitoring, and hydraulic modeling of our system. This is required as part of our CSO compliance program, and it falls in the heels of our CSO storage early action project down at the base of Hill Public Works. So the underground work actually on that first phase is pretty much done. So on the drawing you see up there, the blue lines you see are the early action project, and then the orange or yellowish line there is the future CSO storage tank. There'll be a lift station, there'll be the tank, and then associated piping with that. So the two major components of this first phase were increasing the underflow pipe. It's the pipe that runs from Public Works to the Morrison Channel through Primar Petroleum. And we also built a diversion chamber, and the purpose of those were to optimize the flow to the wastewater treatment plant because we're trying to keep our storage size within reason. So this flow monitoring helps us to verify that that's going to work. So could you go to the next slide, Emily? So this is just a quick picture of what it looks like at Public Works today. The new diversion chambers to the right there are kind of in the foreground. The existing CSO chamber is close to Broad Street. The orange cones you see there follow the line of the twenty-four inch sewer that we laid, basically, again, through Primar Petroleum into Pier Thirty-three to the interceptor sewer. Next slide, please. So this is kind of a diagram of it from the plans, shows that it's, you know, a fairly crowded area for piping. It required two customized structures, and the CSO chamber had to be modified to accomplish our goal. The three-D model is there. I have, actually, it's right down here if anybody wants to look at it. I love to. I was going to put little flow arrows to tell you how it worked. I just ran out of time yesterday, so if you're interested after the meeting, I can cover that for you. One last thing, the soils down at Public Works are not good. So those lines you see going down from underneath the structures with kind of little circles on them, those are called helical piles. They're driven about eighty feet deep to get down. They basically have to get bearing capacity so that those structures and pipes do not settle unevenly. Can you go to the next picture? And then again, this is the diversion chamber, just showing the construction of it. Upper left photo is the reinforcements deal when it's placed on the concrete pad. They set the forms, they pour the concrete, and then the forms are stripped there in the picture in the right. That's before, obviously, the top was placed on the structure. Okay. And the final. Okay, so the upper paragraph here is language directly from our combined sewer overflow, national pollutant discharge elimination system permit. And so basically what it's saying is the reason we're asking for this is we have to start flow monitoring by May fifteenth. That'll occur over about a year, replacing a couple of flow monitors as well as a rain gauge. It's extremely important that we get good data because that feeds into the hydraulic model that's going to make all of this work. One thing I will note, too, is this, there's several amendments that we've done with our contract with Waytrim. About a year and a half ago, we selected them through a qualifications-based selection process. That process was required for the CWS or Clean Water State Revolving Fund Low Interest Loan Program. For their fees to be eligible, we have to hire them through that process. There's also good, you know, you want to have them there because it provides good continuity through the entire program for somebody to try to get up to speed. Obviously, it's fairly complex. Their total fees for this are one hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, over half of that, just over half of that is actually just in the data collection, placing the flow monitors and the rain gauge. The other part of it is a lot of it's the hydraulic modeling, but we also have to coordinate with Eagle, as well as the Joint Wastewater Treatment Plant, kind of jumping back up to the regulatory language. The thing we have to do is make sure we're not going to create an adverse effect on the joint wastewater treatment plant. So we have to show that what we're sending there doesn't overwhelm them and cause problems with their treatment processes. The diversion chamber actually has a slide gate at one of the points that'll allow us to regulate that flow depending on what the results are. Are there any questions?
It's to accumulate capacity if it's overloading the treatment plant, the gate.
It's not an automatic gate, so what we're going to do is this year period, we're going to monitor how well they can handle the flow coming from the city system, and then that's where we'll set the gate. Now, in the future, if there are issues, we can raise it or lower it. So, for example, if they're, they have ability to handle more flow, and we're having fish, problems with discharges that are occurring too often by what the state allows, we could potentially raise it. On the other hand, if they're having problems there with treatment, we could actually lower it. There are a lot of municipalities that contribute to this, to the wastewater plant, so we have to all work together on, you know, it all goes back to inflow and infiltration during weather events. This rainfall event we had just last week really taxed the wastewater plant because of the flows from all the municipalities, not just the city of St. Joe.
Yeah. Just to clarify, I didn't say automate. I said accumulate. That's what that, the gate allows it to happen, it allows it to accumulate in a holding chamber before it gets to the treatment plant if it's overwhelming, and is that what the reason for the gate is?
Yes. Can you go back to the, like, the diagram there, and I'll try to explain it? This is going to be easy to do, but basically, as you're looking at that, the three-D model, the pipe that you see on the right side of it, that's the thirty-six interceptor sewer that runs into it. The normal dry weather flow runs through there, and it goes to the new twenty-four inch underflow that I talked about. To the left there, you can see a little weir. It's a wall with a notch in it. Okay? So initially, if we have a rainfall event, and we get too much flow, that weir is set lower to go to the future CSO storage tank. So it's flow through a pipe that goes up to the left to a lift station, pumps it into the tank. Then if it can't handle it at a certain point, there's a weir on the right-hand side that's actually higher, and that will flow over with the diluted sanitary waste like we have during normal CSOs to the Morrison Channel untreated. And our regulatory requirement requires, basically, we're not supposed to have one of those more than once every ten years. I mean, obviously, there's statistics involved with all that, but...
Sure. Okay.
And it's going to determine the size of our CSO tank that we finally get?
A hydraulic model. I don't know if you want me to go in this much detail, but originally, they told us we had to meet, eliminate discharges from a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour event with a rainfall event that follows soil conservation type-two rainfall distribution. So what that means is a rain within that twenty-four hours, almost all of it comes all at once. We, the hydraulic modeler at Waytrim, who's excellent, he's well-renowned in the state, he looked at it, and actually, that doesn't favor us. There's another criteria where you can do fifty years of data, and you can, if you can prove that you will not have more than one event every ten years, then you can design your tank according to that criteria. So that's the route we're going because that helps us to reduce our storage tank size. You know, and I've talked about the storage tank size. You don't want it too big because you're spending all that money upfront, and then you're pumping all that water during events forevermore. Whereas if it's too small, it's bad because now the state's going to say, you didn't meet your requirement, and you're going to have to have another construction project and build more storage, which we absolutely don't.
Other questions? All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve hiring weed trim to complete flow monitoring and hydraulic modeling professional services as outlined in their March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five proposal on a time and material basis for a amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and to authorize a city attorney to prepare a fourth amendment to the previous professional services agreement as amended with terms acceptable to both the city engineer and city attorney and authorize the city manager to sign the fourth amendment on behalf of the city.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next item, out-of-school time program agreement, Boys and Girls Club. Tess, you got something on this?
I'm going to be recusing myself from this discussion and vote. I am an employee of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Southwest Michigan.
Thank you. We'll come find you when we're ready. Is it locked?
Sorry.
That's okay. I'll get her out.
The Boys and Girls Club of Greater Southwest Michigan has received a Michigan Department of Education out-of-school time grant to provide educational and recreational summer program for youth in the St. Joseph community. They need partner sites to host the program, so Boys and Girls Club staff and city staff have discussed and developed a draft agreement that would allow the use of the John &amp; Deed Howard Ice Arena, or a program for youth between the ages of six and thirteen, very similar to last year and the year before that. So over the last two years, this has taken place. Participating youth would have to become club members at a cost of five dollars and then register for the program. The first two weeks of registration would be limited to residents in the city of St. Joseph, and then would open up to all club members. The program will run from twelve, twelve noon to five P.M. weekdays, June ninth to August first. There'll be no program on July third and fourth, as those are club holidays. So it's, like I said, it's a program that has happened the last two years. It's been very successful. They've had great attendance, and we look forward to hosting them again this year.
I think someone will ask me when registration is. Can, so do you know?
It'll open up as soon as, basically, we execute the agreement.
Oh, okay.
Within, maybe the next week, or maybe even the end of this week, it'll open up.
Might even open up as soon as tomorrow. My wife has been watching the list to see when registration. We got to wait till the city approves it, so.
Okay. No changes from last year, though, on this?
No changes.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Any other questions, comments?
It's also a great use of an ice arena that you can't otherwise use for ice skating purposes in the summer, so.
That's correct.
That's correct. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Greater Southwest Michigan and authorize the city execute the appropriate documents on behalf of the city.
I support. Any public comment on the matter? All right. Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Absent.
Oh, Commissioner Fernandez, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's exciting.
Yes.
It is. Best deal in town.
Okay. Thank you for that. We are now on to new business, item number twenty-three, zoning ordinance text amendment, section two-point-three, three-point-nine-point-three-C and twenty-one-point-seven-point-C, mechanical equipment, city of St. Joseph, first reading.
Okay. Back in September of twenty twenty-four, the city commission directed the planning commission to review the zoning ordinance as it relates to mechanical equipment. The existing regulations are found in section three-point-nine-point-three-C, which prohibits or allows mechanical equipment to encroach into the side yards and into the rear yard when it's located three feet or more from the lot line. And that also required all existing non-conforming equipment to comply with the, these rules and regulations that were adopted in two thousand and seven under the current zoning ordinance. The planning commission discussed this during their October, November, and January meetings. They heard comments from residents expressing concerns about relocating mechan, non-conforming mechanical equipment, and they also heard comments that the rules should not change. In the end, the planning commission recommends that we, they, they're recommending that a definition for mechanical equipment be added to the zoning ordinance, section, and that would be in section two-point-three. In section three-point-nine-point-three-C, the existing regulations, it currently show different examples of equipment. We've eliminated that and just rely on the definition of mechanical equipment, which in the definitions does provide examples of equipment, because there are different types of equipment, and it also includes like a backup generator, and then like an air conditioning unit on the outside of the home. So they provide different types of service. In the end, the planning commission did see there was a need to address non-conforming equipment, so they went into section twenty-one, or article twenty-one, non-conformities, non-conformities and drafted language to allow non-conforming equipment to be, remain in the side and rear yards when located more than one foot from the side lot, side or rear lot lines. There was concern expressed at the, during the public hearing in February, that allowing it on the lot line might be difficult if you had a long skinny lot and you were relying on the street to provide access to your detached garage behind the house. You know, you don't have a lot of space, so you might be hitting your neighbor's equipment. So that was added in the end at that meeting. It also allows for mechanical equipment, certain types of mechanical equipment for like air conditioning units, the heat pumps, it exclude, would not allow for a backup generator that was not compliant in the side yard to remain. That would need to be relocated if you were getting a new generator. It does not allow for equipment located in the front yards or the secondary front yards to remain. Those pieces of equipment would also need to be relocated at time of replacement. One, one property, one resident did speak at the public hearing and did request that we change the terminology for the... Um, it does not allow for equipment located in the front yards or the secondary front yards to remain. It, those, those pieces of equipment would also need to be relocated at time of, um, replacement. One, one property, one resident did speak at the public hearing and did request that we change the terminology for, um, the heat pumps, the ductless heat pumps, we were calling them mini splits. Um, so we did modify that language as requested. And that's really about all I have, so if you have any questions, I can answer it.
Um, I have a question on page 186. Does this allow, if my equipment, if I'm understanding this correctly, if my equipment that I currently have today breaks, I'm allowed to fix it and keep it where it is, but if it breaks and I need to replace it, I now have to move it to the back?
I missed the first part of the conversation.
If my air conditioner or whatever equipment that I have that's on the front or side, I would have to move it to the back if I decide to replace it, right?
If it is located in your front yard or in your secondary front yard, and not all corner lots have a secondary front yard. Um, those would need to be relocated to the side yard or to the rear. If you're in the side yard, you could replace your broken equipment as long as it was one foot off of the lot line. So right now, a lot of the equipment, because of energy-saving things have gotten bigger. But they also now sell those skinny, more skinnier units, which you see in a picture on packet page, um, 190, probably 195 and 196. So there's different types of equipment you can install to meet that one foot requirement.
On the side.
But if it's in the front yard, you would have to relocate it.
Or.
Or you would have to request a variance through zoning board of appeals.
And how much would that cost?
Um, that cost is $600, which includes the cost for the legal's notice, which is running about $2 to $225, the legal note, or the notifications to all property owners and residents within 300 feet, which depending on the type of parcel, you can get up to a hu, 100 property letters that are being sent and then staff time involved. So it, it, it covers the cost of going through that process.
Last question, I think. Um, page 186 referenced a, uh, the intent of this section is to allow existing non-conforming mechanical equipment to be repaired and maintained in its current location and to require existing non-conforming mechanical equipment to be replaced in a compliant location unless the mechanical equipment being replaced has a minimal safety, health or nuisance impact on adjacent properties. Uh, that, that is referenced right there, is, is that that process of requesting variance that you just referred to?
That language is in there for the safety is, because in some cases, if it's still noxious or there's something wrong with it, we still can go after it for a different reason for code enforcement. If it's a problem, we probably aren't going to have that issue, but, um, you know, we would, we would expect that if someone was replacing their non-compliant equipment in the side yard, that the new piece of equipment would be one foot off the lot line. Unless it's a generator and the generator would have to be moved.
And then this applies to air conditioning units and stuff as well, right?
Correct.
My concern with that is, I know what my house looks like and what the duct work is like in my house. And if I wanted to change the location of my air conditioning unit, that would require an overhaul of the inside of my house too, which depending on what your house is, uh, may be a big or small project. This, I have major concerns that this ordinance is going to cause hardships on our residents purely to comply with, oh, we don't want it in the front. I, I can't think of a functional reason why, you know, I can't have it in the front if there's proper space. I get it if it's interfering with the lot line, but when that's not the case, I, I don't understand why we want to delve into the world of inconveniencing our residents and making them make these little changes to appease this, this ordinance. So I have a real hard time swallowing this change based on the ramp. Um, and then having a resident, you know, to, to request a, you know, exception if they believe that they're justified in getting an exception. The fact that that causes them money, um, I'm not a fan of that either, so I, I really don't. I don't like where this one's going.
Kristen, was there ever an, an instance when AC units were able to be placed in our front yard? Or did they wind up there through not getting?
In looking at the previous zoning ordinance, there's no reference at all to them. And you could, you could probably argue that either way. If it's not referenced as an allowing, allowing encroachment, then it would not be allowed at all. Or it was just silent. Um, it, it's silent, it does not call out, it doesn't call out for many encroachments. So you, you could look at it either way, it was just not allowed. So the new, the ordinance was, that was adopted in 2007 clearly states they're not allowed in the front yard.
Is that purely an aesthetic reason?
Um, I would probably so. And I would say that's standard in most zoning ordinance, is that equipment not in the front yard.
And is there any reason that we couldn't think about allowing for shielding or some kind of way to kind of hide that if it is located in the front?
So we, the planning commission did talk about that and there is a member of the planning commission who is a, a landscape architect, professional landscape architect. And you know when they're there, is what I remember this person saying is, you know, they're, it's still there. There's not going to be, you're not going to be able to screen it well, or the screening dies and there it is. Um, you know, or you, you have a dead bush and you decide the new owner doesn't like the bush anymore, so they take it out and then it's visible. Um, so it's best to, you know, just not allow it. Um, the planning, the zoning board of appeals has had two requests in, since at least 2015, if not earlier, I think I even went back and going back to like at least 2008, I could not find any request for, um, mechanical equipment, um, under this zoning ordinance. And the one application, it was in the front yard, but, and the person filed, it was a dwelling, a two-unit, not, not compliant and they were, they replaced one of the units. And as it went through the process, the adjacent neighbor brought in his survey, which showed the equipment was on his property. So the applicant withdrew that application. The second request that was approved was for, I believe it's a 12-unit or nine-unit apartment building that they were renovating and they wanted each of the dwelling units to be able to control their, their, their temperature in the build, in their units. And there was no place, the planning, the zoning board of appeals did approve those variances. Um, with some screening, the duct work all had to be painted to match the building. Um, the equipment really couldn't go on the roof because it's a three-story structure. And that's the building at Pearl and Wayne Street, it's now painted all black. So if you look closely, you can see all the duct work coming down, it's now painted black to match the building. And then there's some screening in front of it. There's a couple of different places on the building where, where it is predominantly facing Pearl Street and Wayne Street. Cause it's in the front, in secondary front yards.
I have one additional question, I can't find it right now, but I thought I read in here, if you're beyond the, you know, you're, there's the three feet from the lot line. But if it's existing, you can go up to one foot, but I thought it was, let's just, let's say hypothetically, it was 18 inches from the lot line and you're replacing it and it's a half an inch closer of the new unit, it's not allowed? Even though it's within the one foot or beyond the one foot?
If you're, if you're replacing your equipment, and let's say your equipment right now is 11 inches from the lot line, you would have to get new equipment that's a foot from the lot line.
Right, but I, I read it as if it was 18 inches and my new, uh, which is still within that grace distance. And the new one I was, was replacing it with all of a sudden went to 17 inches. It's actually larger than what was there.
Okay.
But that was not allowed.
I, I think that was one of the changes that was.
Be packet page 180.
Yeah. I, I think that was one of the changes that was made so that it's, they could go up to one foot closer. There was one.
Yeah, I, I read it as it's any, any replaced equipment is no closer than one foot from the lot line than the equipment being replaced. So if the equipment was 18 inches, then it could get closer.
Out to 17 inches, that would be approved.
Yeah, as long as it met the one foot requirement.
Okay.
So that part I get, the $600 payment for a variance for a replacement, and we've only had two requests, I don't know. There's no other way to resolve that issue.
I just think we're, we're regulating things we really don't need to regulate. Um, this should be something, you know, this, in my opinion, this moves us in the opposite direction. Um, you know, of where we should be going to encourage more development and redevelopment. You know, and if you, we don't have a lot of new construction, you know, we're a pretty built-out city, right? You know, and so our houses are aging. All I see when I see this, you know, requirement is it's going to add extra complications potentially to. That is a deterrent from, you know, contractors that I've talked to, this is extra stuff that they have to look at. It's less incentive to do business and redevelopment in our city. This is the opposite of what we're wanting to do.
I can see a new build.
Exactly.
Requiring.
Exactly, I'm with you on that. I mean, that makes sense to me on a new build, that's part of the new ordinance going forward from 2008 or whenever it was. But if there's an existing that's been there for 15 or 20 or 30 years in the front, they're usually front corners, they're not usually right in somebody's, you know. I, I agree with Michael, I mean, the, the cost to move that, we've, I've already seen it. I've already been contacted by some people that had to move, uh, from a side. This is before this amendment because it was too close to the three feet. And it wound up going to a backyard between somebody's patio and somebody's three-season porch. Neither entity wanted it there, the homeowner or the neighbor, but that was where it was forced to go and it was insanely expensive. I think it's an area we don't, we don't need to be involved in. If it's been there for 25 years, it ought to be able to stay there, that's, that's how I feel about it.
And I think if there was some element of safety, health, some kind of other negative repercussion, maybe.
That spelled out. Discussion, um, and it, it evolved as it went through the, the discussion. And it's not about fire spread. It's not about, these units don't catch on fire and it spreads to the next building. But it's about gaining access and there were, you know, there were two people on the planning commission who voted no on this, this proposal. One of them voted no because he believed everyone should be following the same rules. They should all comply, if you have to replace your equipment, it needs to apply, comply with the rules we have. There should be no exceptions. And the other person voted no because they didn't believe there should be the rules. He, um, but the, one of the concerns that was, was expressed was safety. You know, if you are a public safety officer trying to get back on the side, you know, for any type of an emergency. And yes, there are other things that get there, you might have a fence there, you might have landscaping there. But, you know, it was to try to keep the area open to get around, um, in case of an emergency. And it's not to fight a fire, um, but just for access.
Well, I understand the, the side, the side dimensions, but the front, the front one, I think. I mean, I, I'm all for the writing for the side replacement, but the.
The front yard.
Yeah.
Front yard. I'm having a hard time with that.
Yep.
And we respect the planning commission.
Yeah.
If it's already been there and there's no complaints and it's just an aesthetic thing, I have a hard time being like, well, now you need to replace it. You have to change everything, throw it in the backyard or side yard if it's already been there. I, I would say we should keep that. So do we vote on it as it is, or do we ask you to take it back and can we make tweaks to it?
I, I think we could do it either way.
You can approve it with the change. Ultimately, it's going to come to this body for approval anyways.
Yeah.
Right. So we could.
If, if you could approve a first reading with the change that you're requesting and then that change would be brought back to the second reading?
Okay.
Yep.
Who wants to take a stab at this one?
Or an alternative is we could just let this go and not take any action.
Well, I.
Well, no, because there's a positive benefit, because before, if you had to replace an exist, an existing one on the, on the side.
It had to be three feet.
It had to be three feet.
Right.
Give some extra flexibility.
I think we want to implement that part of it, um, to get to a foot, but remove the section about not having it in the front.
Right.
For non-conforming, is this for the non-conforming?
Correct.
Unit that are there, so new construction would follow the rules, but anything that's currently there could remain in, if it's in the front.
Right.
Okay.
I think. Cause in the front is not a safety issue or an access issue.
No, that's the purely aesthetic.
Mm-hmm.
And I do think, Michael, Kristen can share more on this. There is an ordinance that is already on the books that is more burdensome than this.
More what?
More burdensome than this. And so I think, while I understand that you're, that you don't love this, not taking action would actually leave more burden on the residents than taking, whether it's this action or a tweaked version of this.
Can we wait then, rather than approve a, a first part, just make the changes and then take our full two stabs at it at a later date? Cause I, I'm not sure I would understand this one personally. If we're just piecing little bits and pieces, I'd rather seen it all, you know, those things taken out before I even approve a first reading personally.
I would think that we could direct staff to take a stab at sort of interpreting what you've shared. I don't think there's a reason for it to go back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't think there's a time constraint that would be involved and frankly, I would feel better about that too.
Yeah, yeah, that we get it right. Okay.
I'm happy with that.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with that.
We need to move to.
As long as there's no pending, uh, pieces right now that this would impact.
No, because we have one that, that depending on what happens, we haven't done anything with them. They knew, we explained that we were working on this and depending on the outcome, you know, we weren't doing anything, so.
And they don't need to do anything right away.
The equipment was installed with that apartment, was replaced with that apartment, so.
Already in that place.
So it's a matter of whether or not they're going to move it or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that it's not pressing.
Sitting there.
Yeah.
Okay.
No one's waiting. Do you need a, a motion to table or just direction from?
Just direction is fine.
Do you have what you need then?
I believe so, yes.
And, and you think you're clear on what the intent is of what's been discussed, are we all in agreement on?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. How about a public comment? But yeah, why don't we see if there's any public comment on this issue before moving forward? Anybody? Okay, all right, we will discuss this. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm on page 8, David, I'm from Wynwood, I mean, I just have a little pen and paper with my neighbor in Houston, Tom Koontz, the old St. Joe Chief of Police. And I leave the air conditioners up front of the house and everything like that. It's kind of humorous, I don't really see the deep core of this. To have the old chief of police, to have the air conditioner up front of this house.
Okay.
Other public comments? Alrighty, we shall move along. We are now on to city manager comments.
Um, I wanted to start my public comments by thanking, um, Assistant City Manager Zabel for, uh, holding down the fort last week while I was on vacation. Um, you don't get to truly relax on vacation unless you've got a team that you trust. And, um, I certainly do and it is, uh, was led very capably by Tim last week and I really appreciate it. Um, I also wanted to, uh, give kudos to Kristen, who I now can't find, maybe she's in the back of the room for all this work on HVAC. Um, I know that it was, um, a lot. Um, and while I know we're not quite there yet tonight, um, we have made some really significant strides, um, from where we started. And then I'm going to ask Abby to do a quick update too.
I just had a, a quick note, um, this year is the, uh, election for the city commission. And, um, the deadline to apply to become a candidate is coming up on April 22nd. So I just wanted to put the word out there, um, the packets are available from my office, they're also on our website. Um, and if you have any questions or anyone out there has any questions about applying, please let me know.
Great. Yeah, okay, yeah. You're set, and now we move on to city commission comments. Nothing. Got a couple of things here, um, let's see, Paul, help me out, Savor the Shore. Shoreline, thank you, I had a pile of flyers and someone took them from me, so it's good. It's happening right now through May 4th. And it's several restaurants in the area, so it's St. Joe, Benton Harbor, the surrounding area. They're doing, um, specials for, uh, what, 45 bucks for two people? Some, for, it depends on the restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, we, there's multiple restaurants doing $45, a couple, some doing $45, uh, a person. Uh, and it's to recognize our 45 years as an organization. So go out, have lunch and join us celebrating 45 years of excellence in St. Joe.
Yeah, and it's the first time we've done this.
Yes.
Yes, inaugural year. So just go to the St. Joe Today website and we can see what.
Stj.com/savortheshorline, or you can come into the welcome center and pick up your passport there.
Thank you, sorry to put you on the spot. Other thing we have is tomorrow night, we have an open house here in this room and it is for the, um,
M-dot.
M-dot, thank you. M-dot, thank you. Open house that everyone can come give their input on what we want to see with our main street. So please make it if you can, give your input. We want to make, well, twenty-twenty-seven is the go-live date, so we have time. But, you know, we got to get that input in now. Other thing. This is our last three-week cadence for city commission meetings. Just as a reminder, we will meet again in three weeks, but after that, we'll go back to our two weeks. However, that is Memorial Day, so instead of a Monday meeting, we will have a Wednesday, but for the summer, we will go back to our two-week cadence for commission meetings. And that is it on my list. No one else has anything? We can reset for our study session. I don't have to adjourn, right?
We don't?
No.
No, okay.
Can take a break.
We'll take a break if we need it and then we will reset. Thank you for coming, everybody. Well, I guess we can kick it off. Who's leading us? You? Ben, alright.
So in the back, there's a list of the funds we have. The purpose of this is I want you to understand where the money's going, where it's coming from. And then during the budget, we can also use the same information when we review the actual budget itself. I'm going to start by going over there's, if you remember when we approved the general fund to cattle sign transfer. There's some values that we had to do some math on to remove from the general fund balance. Two of those values are right here. So the first three items, we have general fund itself, the low one. The budget stabilization fund, which we had, probably the capital transfer ban, and then the cemetery fund. Okay, so now let's move on to the special farming funds. And I'm going to start with the second page, two oh four, and that's three fund. And I want to mention that because we have to change the way that the village lives. Right now, the village show is a separate item in the tax bill. It's not an actual separate quarter operating village. So we have to add it to the general fund. The past two years, we've been combining it on the form forty twenty-nine, or forty twenty-nine. That's the form that you sign, that we have to submit our village values, the state and the county and everywhere else. We've been combining it there. But we have to actually combine it on the tax forms too. So when the taxes or tax bills go out, the village value for the roads is still going to be there. It's going to be on top of the general funds. Okay, so the way that that's going to have to work in our side of the books, I'm going to have to bring that money into the general fund. Then we have to transfer it out to the streets because we don't want to lose that money. We want to keep it there for the streets once explored. But we have to actually account for it differently because it's not a separate quarter operating. Okay?
Okay.
So we're going to see that change come through. Okay, so then with the special funds, we have the two street funds, which are actively on funding, two oh two and two oh three. We have street fund, fuel corps, which we just talked about with the change. The debil fund, which is basically right now just there to collect the lease and rent from the hand track in Silver Beach. We use it for some small projects. The rubbish fund, which is a tax funded fund as for the rubbish activities. Then we have three law enforcement funds and these are, the two sixty-four fund is used for grant revenue for Steve's training. Grants come in and then training comes out. That's basically all I have these there. And then two sixty-five and two sixty-six, those are older funds for the forfeiture process, which is how different the laws change. So they kind of hang out there, but we're really not using them. And then last special fund is the band fund, which is also a village-based fund. Okay, now we're moving on to the debt fund. And this is also going to change for next year. It's going to reduce. Because with the, there were two loans being paid for this fund. Now, there's like one left. The clean water, state balling fund from old four had been paid off. That means we have to lower the village because I can't have tax revenues collected for the grants without that there.
Right, yeah.
It also means we have to be super careful when we are collecting that money because if I collect too much, we can't have surplus. Because we only have the one loan left. I have to ratchet the village down and I'm also building a transfer from the general fund. In case the village values that come in isn't enough. I'd rather have general fund feed into that fund than have too much taxes there. So that's going to require two changes this year. This year we'll have a lower village with bringing less taxes, but also have a transfer in from general fund that didn't exist before.
Following.
Okay, then we're moving on to the cattle funds. The first one, the four one fund, that's the major fund. Most of the cattle requests that are not be related like the sewer, the water, the city sewer, place in water. Most of those things will come out of the four one fund. Then we have this odd state street rehabilitation project fund. That was created in two thousand nineteen. It's been sitting there unused. I'm not sure what the plan was. We're going to use it this year though. Tim has a project out there. We're going to use it for a state street. So in this upcoming budget, you're going to see a transfer, moving that money out. And in that fund, we're holding.
That's specifically for the street, nothing else, just.
He used to create funds for projects. It's kind of changed over the years, but like Upton Drive was four forty-one or four forty-one. Yeah, but we're going away from that.
Yeah, we have, if, so anytime in an enterprise fund, we're like, we have fees collected for the water. The asset has to stay with those fees and those fees have to stay in that fund. So what, what we used to do is we create a four forty-one Upton Drive project fund, funnel all the expense there, but then I have to break it out of here. I have to remove that fund. We can't have that fund exist and give their fees or other allocated revenues for that fund. So rather than do that, we're going to have the projects go to the funds, like the streets, to the street side, to the water, to the water side. And we'll use the combination of those funds to fund.
We're going to have less funds overall as time goes on.
Yes, and you actually did like you, the four forty-one fund, you won't see our financials. Because it exists for us operationally, but it's going to come out when we do the financials.
And this just gives us more flexibility.
More flexibility, yeah, less.
Yep.
There's.
It's less accounting, but basically the reason we did it is like four forty-one would take half funding for five nine oh. Five nine two and a lot of times two oh four, the street improvement fund. So we would transfer that in and we just had to turn around and transfer it out. And now basically the project that is driving the fund, you know, fall in there. So example, for example, Upton Drive is a two oh two fund because it's a major street. So it'll be a two fun project, but we would transfer in the five nine oh and the five nine two to cover the sewer and water. And then it, there's a lot of stuff that goes on because at the end of fiscal year, the project's still ongoing on. I'm giving Ben splits for where it should go to the assets and you have to turn around and do it again at the end of the project.
Yeah.
I have not a fan of the June thirtieth.
Yeah.
End of fiscal year.
Yeah.
Like insurance.
And then there's no way, then, then you don't have to worry about overfunding if you're, if you're allocating in advance on what the actual costs are.
I generally always try to put too much money in because I don't want to have a cash flow problem.
Yeah.
Then you get to the end of it or you got to do all the tricks.
Right. So we don't need to do that anymore because we'll just.
So you knew the state tree fund was there. That's not like a Christmas present, but now you can do some fun project. You, you were planning to do something with it all along?
There were two jurisdictions that put money in there in two thousand nineteen, two twenty-one or something. It's just been said.
There's a history on that. During the polar vortex, there's two sanitary sewers that we've talked about this before, so you might recall what we talked about. But for whatever reason, when they rebuilt the street and put in a new sanitary, they didn't take one of the two sanitaries out of service. And so there's only like four sanitary levels on it. And so what we're going to do is we're going to convert those to the newer of the two sanitary sewers. Abandon the old one. It caused a big problem during, I won't get into the details. But we'll get rid of that sewer and when we do it, we're going to do some brick leveling and if we run into some less service line, we'll be disturbed. We have to replace it.
Okay.
Okay, so then next one is the CSO separation fund. And that one was used in the past. But looking at financials this year, there's no expense there. It only exists here because it was a bunch. So we're just going to cut that process out. The same process we're just talking about, use to funnel money there and move it back. This year it still exists, but it will not be going forward. And then we have a lighthouse capital improvement fund and that's funded from the general fund right now. There's a transfer to bigger than others. Okay, now we're going to talk about the permanent fund. This is a cemetery, cemetery trust fund that basically exists to house the investment income. Then we have our enterprise funds that you control, the sewer fund, the water fund, and then the street, the street water fund. Then we have the three internal service funds. We have a workable fund, which is funded by act fifty-one. Schedule C rates that all the departments, the way the system works is state publishes an act fifty-one cost allocation rates. We apply that to our expense and then when activities happen like snow rules, stuff like that. The equipment is used, we'll fund, but the cost will be associated with that. We will fund this month fund. That's where the money, the money comes in. Then we have the self-insurance fund, which is the unemployment workers count fund and then the health insurance fund. And both of those, six seventy-seven, six ninety, come from employer expenses for those activities. Then we have the two component units, the brownfield and HDA. And now we have our fiduciary funds. The first one is the pension fund. These are not budgeted, but I included them because they're on our books. And then the general agency fund, which is our, before we had gas V eighty-four, the T A funds were separate one funds. They're basically not existing, making a lot of the activity out of those funds. Then we have the tax collection fund where all the taxes come in and about all of them to come out. We also have to have separate banking account for that fund. And then we have the housing payroll fund, which only exists because we, we do the housing payroll. He pay their employees. There's expense listed with that and then they pay as well. So this fund is not, it's actually nor the current financials, but I include it here because it is a trust agency activity. Then we have the funds that are on our books, but control the other boards, the three library funds. The first one, two seventy-one is the village. Then they have a capital project fund, which is their lease, the equipment lease purchase agreement for HVAC or whatever they did back in two thousand twenty. And then they also have an endowment fund, which is same as a cemetery trust fund. And then the marina, which is our, our fourth enterprise fund. So that's a snapshot of our funds. Now let's talk about capital projects. Now these, I am not done with the budget. I don't know what's going to make it in, but we wanted to share this with you to give the idea of what we're thinking. The first set we've already seen a couple of times through the water rate approvals. This is the water system fund, the bar meter fund, it's very dangerous fund. The three projects that we're planning for next year will be root, the water plant root, getting the towers to city. And then. City towers first and then contract approvals of the plant. And then next year will be the authority. Do you have any questions on those?
First of good.
Wasn't there something about the water plant roof? We were getting some kind of a good deal because of, what was that?
The contractor had to cut a hole, actually two holes in the roof in order to drop the new.
Clarifier.
Place others, so they operated deals.
Oh, right, right. Good memory.
So this seven sixty-six is just a portion of what we could have been paying for that or is that?
This is for the, there's more than one roof. This is just over the clarifier building. So there's filter buildings and the lab and. And so that's for the other sections of the.
Oh, oh, so this is, that is a completely separate thing. Yeah. Oh, oh, so this is, that is a completely separate thing, yeah, wow, that's a lot of money for roofs.
We, we do plan to apply for EWS or funding the loan, this loan fund, funding goodness word, as well as work and like the let service sign replacement work as well. I don't know if it'll be successful, because it's become so competitive, but we can reflect it weekend.
Okay, so now let's talk about the 401 projects. And, um, you'll notice that Friday morning, we talked about the city parking lot improvements, it was nine hundred grand. Well, a couple hours later, Greg emailed, and that nine hundred went to one place out of the.
No.
So I'll let Greg start with that one.
What?
Yeah, parking lot eleven, um, it's, it's a difficult lot to reconstruct when you do it, because with the paint parking, that is our largest free lot, so to do it in the summer will be extremely disruptive. If, if we're to phase the project, so if we basically allow some of the lot to be open, some of the lot be under construction, it's phasing it, it's a little more difficult for the contractor, that's the one point seven. If we say, you know what, we're just gonna rip the bandage off, let the contractor just do it all, that number is actually like one point four there. Another option potentially, and it's hard for consultants to really put a number on this, would be to, I'll call it like a plan of projects. So open up the construction window from September sixteenth to May fourteenth and say, work on it in that time, but you're still gonna be disrupted to the businesses, but now the paint parking isn't part of the component, so there's, there's a couple different avenues. Spicer, our consultants, never done kind of, what I'll call a winter project, so it'll really have a baseline how to estimate that cost. They believe that it could be similar to the one point three, maybe lower, depending how ambitious contractors are to work. Safely, they're thinking it splits the difference, you know, between that one point seven.
Wait, that would be next, not this fall, it'd be the next fall?
Well, I guess it depends on how you, how you wanna do it, that lot is, this winter was not kind to that parking lot.
Ah, okay.
You need to do something soon.
Yeah.
I mean, this summer, I think if we do a summer project, it's, that's, I don't think it's a great idea, we don't. Spicer would not recommend a phased project, you know, you don't get the quality of a lot when you're all set and done, so I don't think a phased project is the route we wanna go, I think we wanna look at.
Starting in September fifteenth, yeah.
Well, I call it winter project. That potentially could happen, to do the bidding, and it could happen over this winter. Things that could drive that cost up potentially is, do we have a hard winter, asphalt plants don't open as scheduled, pushing deadlines back. You get a contractor comes in, has the lot done in January, and it's all under gravel. We can't go in there and plow gravel and, and snow, so it's kinda one of those where the lot's open, if there's no snow, but if there's snow, we're not going to remove it, because then we get to strip the base.
What if they start September fifteenth, how long does it take them? It's gonna be warm for.
That's so many times.
So as an, as an example, so as an example, um, parking lot twelve, which is a lot smaller.
Yeah.
Uh, they started the second, third week of August. And we're right up against the November fifteenth deadline to complete. Now, you could argue that the contractor that we had on that job wasn't super efficient and probably pushed that limit because of their inefficiency, we can't control that, so based on the size of this lot, it's, it's going, they won't get it done by November fifteenth, just.
Do we have to do eleven, can we? I said it's pretty bad, it's really bad.
DDA.
Forget it.
The next lot was, I wanna say lot four, but the DDA voted to switch, to swap the order. Because parking lot twelve was done, parking lot eleven looks so bad, and it looks even worse next to.
Yeah, that's where I'm parked right now.
Um, and so they have requested that change.
They want eleven?
Yeah, yeah, which, which doesn't mean that it's what the city has to do.
Right.
If we don't do it, we should put some money into fixing it up, buy some time.
Like an intel? Or is that not?
I think that might be too extreme, but I mean, look at some isolated patches that buy us some time, but it's, this winter, like, it really went downhill. You know, and as you think, you know, we've got Main Street twenty twenty seven, we can't, I don't think that'll last that long, but we definitely don't wanna be reconstructing a lot.
When is that going in?
Right, I think we had several law offices calling me, because they had some bad comments with.
I think we should try to do it in September and see what they say, can't we do that?
How did we get from nine hundred to either the one point four or one point seven?
So the nine hundred was really kind of a
Guess.
It was merely a guess, based off some numbers, you know, related to lot twelve. The one point, the one point four, one point seven are, as of Friday morning, estimates vice versa, based on today's current construction market.
And Spicer didn't do the other lot?
They did.
They, they did do the design of that, but.
They didn't do the work?
Yeah, they, they did all the work for lot twelve.
Wait, what did you say was so slow, oh, it was, oh, they didn't do the, okay, sorry, okay.
That nine hundred is just staff saying, looking at this, we're thinking this is what it will be.
Yeah, okay.
That's, at this point, that's almost two years old, that, you know, that number's lived there for about two years. The reality now is, here's where we are.
All right. Here's a thought, I mean, we are doing this downtown pub, hey, program to hopefully generate revenue, would it be better to do something that's very temporary to just get it through for the next couple of years, and then we can use some of our revenue to actually do a good job of it? And we're not.
I would say.
Doing work in the DDA before we start.
I would wanna understand the timeline, I was thinking something, or if we had revenues generated, we could look at doing it at the end of the second year of downtown parking program, and then revenues could, I don't, we'd be able to pay for it, but could at least split the cost. I think we would just have to look at how that bumps up against the end up project.
But in the bigger picture, wh- what was next lot four, what's lot four gonna look like in three years?
Right.
Is they not gonna make it that long, is the money gonna get spent somewhere before we have enough revenue coming in from the parking program? If that's the case, maybe it just makes more sense to do it in the right sequence.
And we talked about lot four being the next one, there's been some thought given to, there's one more lot on the east side of Main Street. Get all those done, it's a smaller lot, it's over the five, I think it's nine, so we get nine, next would be nine, that way, east side's done. And then we can move into the downtown. Doesn't even have to do it that way, it does make sense, I guess, from this, all right, east side's done, I will move plus. Four is pretty bad, nine is not great either, so I mean, we're.
The other thing we've talked about briefly is doing some kind of a swap. Do we want to have Spicer do designs for lot four or lot nine or whatever, and do one of those lots in the interim, so we're not doing nothing?
On the subject of Spicer, just a quick question, I guess for you, Tim, or Greg. Is there some unique condition in eleven that, or twelve, which is the one we just redid, twelve? Why that drain is not at the low point in the, there's water, it doesn't go in the drain, in the parking lot. It goes around the drain, it doesn't go in the drain, are you aware of that? I have tons of, I have video of it from that hard rain we had the other day, and it's not going in the drain.
Is it because it's going outside the drain, or is it just going over the top of it because of?
It's going outside the drain.
Okay, well, then that was, but honestly, it was improper paving, um, and it is hard when you're paving with asphalt, and, and your grades are minimal, to make that low point work. The only way you can assure that is to go with concrete, concrete has hydro tolerances. Um, I know that there was a lot of struggle in the grading plan on that, um, and there were a lot of changes, so it was revised as construction went along, um, so.
But who, who's, I mean, somebody should be responsible, we're paying a consultant and an engineer and a company to do it, and we have a product that sucks.
Right, well, I would agree with that, um.
Is it just after a really hard rain and, and now it's resolved?
No, it's all the time, but it's very visible when it's a hard rain, that's when you can see it.
It's, there isn't, after the rainfall is done, there is not a bird bath.
Okay.
So what happens is, is it, I think some of it is heavy rainfall, some of it is getting in during your moderate intensity, it's not getting in, but then the next one's catching it. Um, and some of it then is, I think, the sheeting out into the road, which then ultimately goes down and catches the next.
I, I, I'm just saying, from an accountability standpoint, and now we have the same players, I don't know who's gonna do the construction, we have the same players involved, number one, should somebody take accountability and fix it, not at our cost, and number two, how do we make sure it doesn't happen again? Because if it's the same, if it's the same engineer, I'm a little frustrated.
I completely agree, um, from the standpoint, standpoint of constructability and the contractor and the constraints we are dealing with, um, I understand why it happened. But honestly, I've had situations where I've worried about making the contractor come back and actually make it worse instead of better. I don't know that that wouldn't be the case with power box if we did.
Then can we say that they're off our list in the future, I mean?
I certainly think that we can look at, you know, future biz, and if they come in low, the commission has the discretion to go to the next low bidder if they weren't happy with their performance.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, who appears aware of that, I know I'm aware of it because I'm kind of a geek about that kind of stuff.
So now, now we are, so we won't.
But I'm just saying, this is, I think we're leaning to you guys to say, because you guys are the ones that come to us and say, this is the low bid, but we shouldn't use them because they screwed up twelve. That's what I'm hoping that we hear next time.
We have done that before, they have done that for us in the past, yeah.
I know.
We have done that before, um, the example is Paige I did, our twenty twenty two, I think it was, um, let's serve a sign replacement project, they were very slow, we've had some comps with water main breaks. We meet with all the perks every Friday morning, and I'm telling the guys, document these breaks, is it their fault or not their fault? Because if we have a list of problems because they did improper compaction, the next time they did a project, we'll bring it to the commission and say, you know what, based on their past performance, we're gonna bypass them and hire V and Z.
Sure, I mean, we'll.
And I'll, I'll be honest, I would not hire Halla. There's no way.
Well, I appreciate that feedback, I think that's something we need to hear.
It was a terrible experience, it was frustrating, because as I said, they were extremely inefficient, their staff was expressing frustration, they were hollering, they were attached with people being told.
Gotcha.
All right, and I think with the paving, Reed Riley was, I thought they did a great job paving, they were up against the gun, and I think they may have missed it, I don't think it was by much, but I, I think they definitely missed it, but I don't, like Tim said, the tolerance with asphalt paving.
Yeah.
It's, it's tough to hit that just right.
Yeah, and again, I just, I come from a world where if you don't do what's in the contract, your feet get held to the fire, and it doesn't sound like that's the way it happens here, because they come back in and make it worse. We, I just don't understand that.
What we need and what we're describing is really a responsible contracting policy. I mean, that is the, in essence, to make sure that we get quality work done by people that we know are gonna do a good job. Us specifically, everything that we've just described in the last five minutes are elements of a responsible contracting policy.
And I'm a realist, though, because I also don't wanna paint ourselves into a corner where we have one bidder, because, so I get that, we've been through that, we, when things, so I, I'm just vocalizing frustration, I don't know what the answer is, I'm looking for some feedback from you guys.
I could be far more demanding ten years ago than I can today.
Okay.
With the money that got dumped into infrastructure, um, people just won't bid our projects.
Yeah, just go somewhere else.
Yeah, and I can't get professional consulting firms to, you know, R F Vs. There's a bird bath, I'll tell you right now, on Market Street, Buffalo Boulevard, and I'm ticked about it, and it was a blown gray by Evan Marsh. But I know what happened, the engineer that designed it was on his way out the door, and he wasn't paying attention to the details.
And that was Evan Marsh?
Yeah, yeah, so by and far, they do a good job.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But that, they blew that, and I've got emails, there's an email train going back and forth right now on how are we going to resolve this?
They have insurance for errors and omissions, right, so.
And that's, and that's the, with lot eleven, I mean, it was something that we noticed, you know, in, in walkers with Spicer, that it, it wasn't. But I, I think our, at, at the end of the day, when the rainfalls are over, there isn't a bird bath, and we kinda like, okay, it's not sitting there, so it is draining. It's going somewhere.
Not going to the drain, it was intended to go, but it's getting caught somewhere.
But it's getting, it's getting caught in the next drain, because there's two in a line there behind the fire section, there's one here, there's one here. Whatever misses that, then goes out, catches the gutter, and there's another one out.
Okay.
Basically, it's out in Broad Street.
I just happened to be there when it was raining, and I drove by and I backed up, and went. Wait, what?
It's, there's times where I've seen it going in there, but it's a very high intensity, but, but for me, I guess, I feel better about the fact that there isn't a bird bath.
Okay.
They have to agree.
All right, I, I mean, maybe it's just worth pointing out to some of these things, not in a malicious way to Spicer and say, hey, you know, we happen to notice these things, maybe, maybe they pay just a little extra closer attention next time.
Oh, yeah, we actually created a list of lessons learned with that, because we've worked with them all over here. And as we go through the design, we'll, okay, pull out the list, let's make sure we're not missing these things.
Okay.
Now, I will tell you, they have new staff, so.
Could be a new problem.
Well, that, but it's also, go find the list, and they're like, that list, it's, you guys screwed up, and it might not have been you.
Yeah. It sounds like you reminded them, right, you handed them the list.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I didn't wanna make a big deal out about, I just wanna make sure that.
Doesn't happen again.
Yeah, that we're, we're on it.
Well, you're the experts, but I would love to have this parking lot done, I just don't, what, what would they come back and say if you say, can you do, do it, part of it in September and the other part in, in March or April, I mean, what is the real, reality with that?
You don't get good work when you split it.
You don't.
Yeah, you don't, things even start, right? You have to, but it's, it's not the recommendation.
We are rolling the dice when you try to do it over the winter, the vortex winter, they were trying to build a hotel, and they had to have it ready for the senior PGA, they actually had to bring out like heaters and hoses, because the ground froze, and we had to thaw the ground in order to pour the concrete. Now, we wouldn't do that, we just say, okay, we're just gonna have to wait for it to thaw, which means instead of being done on Memorial Day, it's gonna be done by the middle of June or July. That's, you're, we will be rolling the dice when we do that, but I think it's better to do that, because our winter is typically been long out.
And you give them that bigger construction window, and they may show up September sixteenth and.
Go ahead and do it all.
Go at it, may not get it paved by November fifteenth, they're not gonna get it paved by November fifteenth, but it's done, plant's open in the spring, they pave it, and we're good to go.
So that's okay, they, we can do it that way, you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as the ground doesn't freeze.
Well, I would prefer to do it that way, I don't know what you guys think.
As long as the subbase is done, you know, and you make, you do the paving all as one, like paved, um, then you get a really solid project, when you like pave half of it, and then you work on the other path, and then you pave that, you just, you don't get the quality. You run into issues where you do creep bird baths, because it's hard to match that asset.
Yeah, and that's kinda what happened on parking lot twelve, right, it was got done in pieces.
No, that was more how the contractor did the underground work, he did it in pieces and phases, that just didn't.
Didn't, didn't need to.
And seeming at a different time is never good, that just never works.
It just, yeah, never matched.
Um, and, and worth pointing out, this, these are Spicer's estimates, it could come in at two million on a bid, we have no idea, right? Right, so, you know, yeah, I, I don't think we should, I don't think we should definitively say anything, I think we should move forward with the plan, but be ready to derail it if pricing is just obscene.
Right, right.
And then, and then go to Plan B, which is a, a little more than cold patching, right, to get us by. That's what I would be in favor of.
So like a winter proj, shoot for a winter project, bid, see what the numbers are, and then assess.
Yeah, I like it. Okay, one item. Oh, oh, we need to prioritize, yes, that's the important, yeah, that's what we have to do, then, okay.
But if, being at the values so high, it'll have to be at the top to fit into the budget.
So I think we plan to prioritize this list as a staff. And when we share it with you next, it will be prioritized, but I'd say, as we have this conversation, if something jumps out as a priority to you, please let us know, so that we can factor that in as we're prioritizing lists. Please let us know so that we can factor that in as we're prioritizing lists.
Yeah, the next to needing, I have to have a budget to be dragged. And those other stuff be, uh, budgeted over here. So at that point in time, we'll have a much better view of listing budgets. Uh, the next one is public works and solely improvements, six hundred grand.
As you know, we've got some issues down there, trying to address some of them. There is, what, what that is, is there's actually three hundred thousand budgeted this year that we're not willing to spend. We, we've been on a project for a, a building and some storage for our materials to get cover of our material. Um, we've got a bid, uh, the contractor has said he can only start till July, so we're gonna take that three hundred thousand. Roll it to next year with another request of three hundred thousand, so we can construct that. Demo the building that needs to be demoed, then we can address some other issues with the site, whether it be. Um, facade that needs to be addressed, whether we build another building in the location where we're demoing one. There's, there's a lot that can happen, constructing some sort of shower facilities within the existing building. So there's a lot that can happen, but that's essentially what it is, it's three hundred that we're not spending this year, we're gonna roll it forward. With an additional request of another three hundred. To make those things happen and we, and public work should be in a better, are we positioned at that?
Are we starting to concede that we're gonna try to make it work down there and, I mean.
Yeah.
At least temporarily for a while.
And I think given that, I, you know, I have.
It's gotta be a high priority.
You have no prob, this should be at the top of the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem with that, you guys need.
Yeah.
Whatever you need, you need.
Condemned building should probably go.
Yes.
We can all agree on that.
Yeah, I think that's the top, I didn't even look at the rest of the list, but it has to be the top.
Hey, Dickinson Park restroom parking lot.
So that's the Dickinson Park restroom playground parking lot, that's the grant we have, it's kinda tied to the work at the school, doing the site. Um, we're close to actually going out the bid, working with Evan Marsh. Um, so, that's. There's money, there was money budgeted this year for that because of how the grant cycle was, so we had to have money budgeted for it, knowing well. The work wasn't gonna happen, so realistically, the work maybe could happen this fall, next spring timeframe. So that's where we're, that's where we're shooting for, and there is a grant, you know, fifty percent grant on that. See what those numbers come in, cause keep in mind, when those initial estimates were created, that was like two years ago because of how this grace, how long the grace cycles are, so.
It was fifty percent up to three hundred, wasn't it?
Our, I think. I think the grant was for two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
Five thousand, so, yeah.
Is that included the playground or that?
No, the playground was always separate, because it would impact our grant score, we didn't wanna drag that down, so.
Okay, I, who has part improvements, one fifty?
I guess that's really more of a, related to the kaleidoscope playground project, the. Request to assist with that, knowing that the city was going down to replace that playground at some point in time. Um, so, and if we were to replace it. Spend somewhere in a hundred and fifty thousand, that's, so that number since we're receiving this.
One point three million.
Amazing playground, I, you know, I think contributing. Hundred and fifty towards that, um, to make some improvements, to make it better.
And that has been approved in the capital plan for this year, and that would be rolled over into next fiscal year, is that right?
Depending on timing and how, yeah, um. We know with some team, they're starting to install now, so we're looking at some options of where, I mean, best sense to spend that, we, it all come together is.
So you said that money is currently approved for that?
Yes.
Fiscal twenty-four.
So that makes it already approved for twenty-six.
No, we'll roll it forward to twenty-six.
And so that would require approval.
Yeah.
Would.
Yep.
Even though we already approved it.
For, for this year, but it'll probably get spent this year, so it'll happen.
Every year you don't spend, you have to approve it every time, got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, skate park equipment replacement, one fifty.
The Kwanis Park player, uh, skate park equipment, um. It's twenty years old now, I think, uh. The manufacturer, um, American Ramp Company, we've had them out multiple times to make repairs. Um, give us a little assessments, you know, how's it look, what are your recommendations? It has been doing okay, their last recommendations, like, you gotta, you gotta do something.
Or it's gonna deteriorate, or somebody's gonna get hurt.
You're running into some structural issues, it's, it's approaching, uh.
Danger.
Danger point, we're not there, but very soon.
As in one year, five years?
I think we're.
It's pretty bad, yeah.
Years, maybe, it just depends on how it weathers, how it's used, that we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna have to close it or.
Does it still get used, is skateboarding still a thing? I have no idea.
Whenever I'm there, there's lots, there's a lot of kids.
Left to go and they're, we are never the only people there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very well used.
Yeah.
Good.
It's one of.
It's a valid question.
I just happened to drive by, I'd never seen anybody, but I didn't know skateboard's still a big, big deal for kids, it sounds like it is.
Bikes too, right? Yeah, bikes, scooters, yeah, scooters, yeah.
My kids just climb it without anything.
And when I'm skateboarding, I never see.
Greg said, which is if we don't get the timing right, we could have to close it.
Right.
Um, which, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I don't love the look of.
A closed, yeah, closing something. That's being used, yeah, that's being used, yeah.
I just don't think it's a great look.
Okay.
I'd rather be ahead of it.
It, like I said, I think we're okay, but it just needs.
For a year. Yeah.
Gotta be something we do soon.
Boiler replacement, how are it, sorry, one thirty-third?
The boiler system is all original, um, we can't get parts for the existing system, so it breaks.
Sense.
We're out, um, and the boiler system is integral to the ice process, so there is. Um, there is an underheat system under the slab, so that we don't get frost heat to the slab and cause the concrete slab to, to move. So the boiler system is very critical, not only to water, hot water for the locker and stuff, but actually. Keep slab from heaving and really causing some problems.
That's just the boiler replacement itself, it's none of the, none of the understructure work, that's all fine and it's compatible with a new boiler.
Yep.
Okay.
City hall, city hall elevator upgrades, one twenty-five.
That is. Elevator, we've had some issues with it, there's some regulations that have changed at the state level, so we just have to get a pretty good other code. We had, unfortunately, we've had some people get stuck.
Really, gosh, well, I guess we can't ignore that if it's not up to code.
No, there's, there's, it's related to the. I don't know, I'm not sure if I got the right words, but it's related to like this security, if you're in there and you get stuck and you've gotta. Push the call button or whatever, that is obsolete, it needs to be replaced, so that's one of the things that. The state's saying, you, you gotta address this, you can't, cannot have an elevator with a. Non-functioning emergency call system.
Gotcha.
I mean, especially cause our meetings are here on the second floor, we need to have that accessibility for everybody, so I think that seems pretty important to me.
Maybe we won't find anything that's not important.
I know.
Our next one is Dickinson Park playground, one twenty-five.
Touched on that, that was, it's part of the Dickinson project, um. It was not part of the grant, but it was something we want, you know, we talked about for years, that there isn't a playground in that segment of, of. City, the ski, needs a need, um, there would be a. Small, beside playground, so that's, a hundred and fifty would be destructive safety servicing, so it's. Um, it'll be a fairly small playground, cause if you think, uh, we spent just over a hundred thousand at River View to just replace the equipment. This is going to have to be equipment and border and safety servicing, so it's. It's a little bit more expensive, so it's not gonna be a huge playground, which is, which is okay, we don't need a huge playground, we have bigger playgrounds than other parks, but. This does fit, fill a need in that, uh, quadrant.
Real quick in that vein on playgrounds, I know we've talked about them a lot over the last couple of years. I'm starting my travels and I'm starting to see more and more playground services go to synthetic turf. Is that something that is not good for our, our?
It is, it's, it drives your cost up.
But even over the long haul, because understanding that's gonna be good for fifteen or twenty years, that not true.
Uh, you get the wares, like in the heavy wear areas, which then you gotta cut out the segments, um, okay.
When, when we were opting between the poured in place and the synthetic.
Is the most expensive.
Okay, cause that, yeah, okay.
Next, you know, there are some other cheaper things as it come down, but the cheapest is the wood fiber.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not balls, but it's, it has, there's a component to it, it has to meet certain standards. But it's a wood fiber that is the cheaper option.
Okay.
And you can replenish that at a pretty reasonable cost versus, you have to replace that synthetic at a.
Yeah.
High cost.
Sure.
Next one is public safety, do you have a goal, like, when outfitting, one time, so you ask me about it.
That's, uh, moving, we, right now, we have five squad cars, five people on shift, cars go down often. That will be one, we're down just this year, the three cars, which we had two cars down, that's add that extra six car to the fleet. So we can keep central, especially on fire costs, that. Car goes down, we got three cars, we had the back car, we're looking to touch it by fire. Get two cars off in the city. It's not cheap, but it's more car, with cameras, video system. And all the components.
Very, next one is zoning ordinance.
Well, it's only, it's almost twenty years old, and we're doing a lot of amendments.
Here comes Kristen.
Time and we also need to address housing. Which I think is best through a consultant to educate the public on how to get additional housing units in residential areas. If you start really reading zoning ordinance and using it, you can see that. And this is in a lot of communities, but I think what happened when the zoning ordinance was adopted, created and drafted by the consultant that was hired. From what I understand, it was his last ordinance he did. And he, he was an excellent zoning expert, but I think it was a lot of cutting face from other views. So if you read things, it'll say, the language changes, like, we cha- changed something recently about yard versus setbacks. Cause those terms were kinda used interchangeable and they're not, they're very different things, so. Um, you know, the planning commission, we've looked at, we haven't done anything with it, but like the P U D section is pretty cumbersome and. It'd be very well, much more streamlined, we really don't have anything about accessory or seasonal uses, temporary uses. Um, so that makes it difficult to go through some other steps with people who wanna do. Like igloos in there, on their property, that kinda thing, so I think it's time, it's pushing twenty years and. It, it's, it's.
Agreed.
I mean, it, you wouldn't throw it out and start from scratch, but there's things you pull over into it, but there's. Lot more graphics that could be added, a lot of used graphics in your documents now than what we have.
Is there merit to, to making it a special project internally and just going to? Half a dozen western Michigan coastal communities that are relatively new? Getting their ordinances and looking at those, use a framework, let's not start from scratch, but let's, let's. Use something that's already in place and then tweak it to make it personal to us?
No, I mean, I think we do that for certain sections of, you know, there's something that we'll get, we, we, the custom looks. Different to me, these are similar, it's same show, so if you're talking about, you know.
A whole.
Altogether, it's. Um, usually there's public input. Getting a part of that process, it's hard to do that. Staff, I mean, certainly.
Portions, yeah, but.
I would worry about capacity.
Yeah.
Kristen's got a full-time job and there are a lot of things that I know she and I would both like to get to, but. It's hard to do that when.
And do the job.
Planning commission in particular, uh, people can submit their application to get on the agenda, save for Z B A, and so we can't. Can't create free time when all of that work is coming in, um, and so I think it's really. Of course about the expertise, but it's also about the additional capacity to be able to focus and drive the work forward.
That sounds like this could be a full-time job, an additional full-time job if we wanted to do it in-house.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we wanted to. I, I, I believe that we have like the foremost expert in zoning on our staff. Like, there's not a doubt in my mind that Kristen knows more than anyone else in this area. And if we wanted to hire a person to do the day-to-day and free Kristen up to. Look at ordinances and do all of that work, I think we could do that.
But that would cost the same as, it's all great.
I mean, I don't, I would assume so, I. Perhaps we could find some savings, perhaps we could go a little bit faster, I don't really know. Um, we could explore it, but I think that without additional capacity, we're not gonna be able to get this done quickly. It's gonna remain this sort of ad hoc approach that we've been taking, which is.
Is that appealing?
Very frustrating.
And it's, it holds up stuff.
Having a consultant do it, they can address things different ways. Like I, I'm a board member now, I'm the Michigan Association of Planners, or planning and. Listening to, and it's the first group of people, and one of, there's two consultants on the, the board with me and. They can word things differently and they take it away from staff, so it's not. Everything's not gonna be directed at staff, it's more directed at the consultant who can better address it, or it's not. It, it's viewed differently when it's coming from a third party. Um, you know, yeah, there's a lot of things, and I do enjoy, you know, ordinance writing and drafting and search. Of that, but, you know, like Emily said, it, it's, you know, the capacity, it's the time, time involved, you know, Lori and I. Took us, what, two years to do the sign ordinance, you know, and it. Because it was, you know, as time, time allotted for, and I think with the sun, with the zoning ordinance, you're out of time. Where, you know, getting a lot of good graphics in there and, you know. I think that's kinda where you're, you're at.
And an expert will come in and also like update or modernize or say, okay, this seems archaic and, okay, okay.
I mean, we'll, we could call out areas that we all need to address, but.
I mean, cause we know we need to do some ordinance updates, so it seems like a, an important thing to do.
Thing that I think, we don't need to spend too much time on this, but the other thing that. My tier question that I would wanna think through is where the planning commission fits in. Right, because everything that Kristen does, she takes a crack at, she takes to the planning commission. Goes and makes modifications, she goes to the planning commission, and I also think there's a huge amount of time savings. If you have a consultant who comes in.
And so this is what we're.
A whole bunch of stuff, says this is best practice. Still gets input from the planning commission, I'm not trying to remove them, but I think it is just a very new, very different approach. Um, so, I, I think we can think, I can think a little bit more about that process. Um, but I think again, it, it could really shift the speed and the dynamics of it.
Yeah.
Okay, the period dispatch two factor authentication.
Um, the Auberry County agencies are going to CAD, which is computer aided dispatch. Which you have a dispatch to cause, it gives you everything that happens inside the house, usually they'll not put up there, so. The weapons involved and everything that's involved. Two factor authentication, we failed our last one on it because we're not that. Is reported by the state mission.
Okay.
In our in-house computers, in our in our cars, and I would recommend that the whole city goes to two factor authentication, not just us.
Which I agree.
That's part of this, a whole IT.
Yeah, so is this, yeah. Yeah. Hmm, okay.
So this price here is just public safety or for the whole thing that you're recommending?
Just public safety.
Uh, next one is park sign replacements, this is your guy.
This is basically a continuation of our, um, wayfinding, so it's part of the wayfinding, it's replacing. These park signs, so like the Dickinson park sign, the, um, Milton park sign to match the wayfinding. Based on the current pricing, sixty-five thousand would replace all of our park signs, um, to match our existing wayfinding.
And Greg, did you remove Lions Park and just score any of that?
Yes. Yes.
There's a third.
Lions link block in twenty are getting done this spring, so this would just be the remaining thirteen parks.
And next one, shotguns, neither paid for by officers, but we want them purchased on expense lines and move them to a balance sheet because. They're all deductions, get them back, but we need your rule first.
Gotcha, yeah.
This is looking for, the, the main thing here is looking for close quarters and less lethal ammunition in those shotguns. And each officer owned their weapon, we almost had an officer involved shooting on Friday. An individual that had a little episode on one of our apartment buildings, which this would have helped with less lethal in our vehicles. To control that situation.
Okay.
Have time, we have that right now.
Really?
Really?
It's an overreacher.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
That is one hundred percent paid for by the officers.
Yeah, yeah.
They purchase their own shotgun.
That's right under public works improvement. That's number two.
Yeah.
Mine are less than a regular.
Street notice is that can't move from the, um, this to your twenty-six to twenty-seven. Is that right? Okay, uh, you ever scratch out that now?
Yeah, let's grab it. It'll stay here only because, um, it moves to the option.
Oh, right, okay.
Uh, City Hall carpet replacement, that's on the public safety sign.
We were original carpet to the building, so most of the building, twenty seven, so we never had a separate replacement.
It's pretty nasty.
It's probably time to get rid of the mold and some of the.
Gosh, yes.
So they did the, they did replacement already downstairs only? Okay, and I heard.
It's been staged and staggered. I know John's office got it at some point. I think the rest.
Sees good.
The rest of the upstairs got it at a separate time downstairs, but never on the public safety side.
Got it, okay.
Uh, AV.
We'll get you.
Um, hey, this technology is great, but it could be better. Um, so this is money to bring it a little bit, um, up to speed. Um, there are a couple of things to, is this from our book?
I don't know where that.
I don't either. Um, we spoke to, did you get that book? Okay, we spoke to Moss Telecom, uh, just before I left on vacation and we talked to them about what we wanted, because numbers likely change. Um, we need another controller like this. Over where Kristen is sitting, because that's where Kristen and Lori set to run the planning commission meeting. It's where Kelly sits for the D D A meetings. Um, so we need a second controller. We also have to go through Zoom to present. And so you'll see that people are always telling me to advance the slides, because it's not convenient, um, to have everyone else join Zoom and co-present. The updated systems allow for you to just sort of present through the system, um, which should be a big improvement. We need to get some additional mics because now that we have a mandate to record certain meetings.
Alright.
We need to make sure everyone, like in a meeting like this, can be heard. Those are the biggies.
I think the main thing was staff training, so we all know.
And we wanna make sure we have.
Yeah, protecting, yeah.
Yeah. So, um.
We'll know if it's glitching or if it's operating or anything.
And we've wanted to do this sooner, but to Brooks' earlier question, the money did not get approved for the second year budget. So there's been a gap for this just four year. So this is just building off of what we currently have. We're not really. We're not replacing it. We're just.
Right.
Yeah. It, you know, wasn't perfect the first time around and the technology.
Okay, next one is B S N A cloud upgrade. Uh, B S N A is our accounting system. And this number fifty grand is a placeholder. I'll know more tomorrow. I have a meeting when they're about, um, like the actual cost. Uh, but the deal is, the version we're using is old, so it's about eighteen. Uh, the new version is called the cloud and it's W is the cloud. Uh, but this is to upgrade to the new version. City Hall parking lot storm drain.
So the back, at the back lot, um. We, it was budgeted for this year to redo portion of the lot, fix the storm drain there in your back. We're just basically pushing that the next year because engineering hasn't had time to design it. So. Budget of this year, we're just pushing to next year to address, um, the storm drain in the back of the super lot.
Okay, next one is public safety involved with vests.
In the contract, the vests get replaced every four year. That's a Patrick lady, Ben Grans, so fifty percent of that is paid for by the.
Next one is cemetery road paving.
The cemetery road is in parts of the old cemetery, every, you're in rough shape and you'd like to, to pave it. Is it? Is it critical? No, but it's something that. It's starting to show it's wet and tear, so.
Greg used this as the example in our budget meetings, this thing that gets bumped every year. So it's never a high priority.
Yeah, it's not a high priority, but it's something we need to.
At some point it needs to get done.
Right.
Uh, in-car video and body camera passed you.
That's a five-year program.
This is gonna be on it for three more years.
Two, two more years.
As well as the, um, two years of. Uh, next one is five-year parks recreation master plan.
So every five years, we have to update our, um, five-year parks recreation master plan to comply with, um, the state. And we're just receiving the grants that we have recently received. So it's just an update. Um, it's kind of like with Kristen's, it's. It's a capacity thing to try to, because you have, there's a lot of requirements, the whole, um, community input meetings and surveys and, and. It's just easier to have a consultant to help you pull all that together. Um. But we're hopeful because we, we did a really great plan previously, but this is more of an update. Um, so. Maybe, maybe that number will be a little less just because it's a more of an update, said about complete redo, which you have to do every so many years.
You use the same.
We could use the same consultant and just kind of do a re, but you still have to do the surveys. You still have, there's some things you still have to do, but. Um, because we went. We went big the last time. This one doesn't have to be quite this big. But we still have to update it every five years.
Next one is the downtown plant implementation project. That's just the remaining funds of the.
I'm entering for three years, which is gone now for like six years. But that is what will be, is projected to be remaining at the end of this year. And like the D D A has done the past two years. Whatever is, whatever additional is remaining, they will likely ask to roll into this video.
Okay, why have the rock refurbishment refurbishments?
So every, every year we send pieces up to the life of love, um, in for refurbishment and update to L E D lights. So we think of those, the arches. Think of the stuff that went on maids of the mist, you know, we, we've had those refurbished and updated, because again, that system's. You know, twenty years old now, so we're, it's, it's just updating. So we're just kind of cycling through every year, taking a little bit at a time. So we're getting close to having cycled everything through.
Then you're gonna just have to start.
Then we should, well, we should, we should be able to have a break, but then we will have to start.
Next one is any light and beach shelters.
Yes, so this is a code enforcement thing. We kind of dinged on, so we just need to, um, paint some of the side of the. Undersides of the structures.
And your outsers saying this is capacity or if it's an expert?
Um, some of them are metal, so we're probably looking at sandblasting, which is something we can't do. A lot of it is, we're gonna have to sandblast and put a rust inhibitor on it and then paint it. It's, because it's those. Two newest pavements are the ones that are showing it. Something we've known about, but then. They've been gone for a good force, so brought it higher up in the stores.
Last one is riverfront trip, hey Greg.
So that's just something we've had some money set aside for the trail, um, closed. Green trail to go along the river from, basically from the, um, Pier Thirty-three all the way past the hospital, which we have an easement with the hospital, but. This would be the secure easements and things of that nature as they come about. So they might get spent, but it's there in case something comes up, we have an opportunity to secure it and then pop it.
Is that for the bike path too, if they're trying to? No, that's got nothing to do with it. Okay.
Okay. Oh, it's, it was the maintenance to continuation of our.
Uh, year, yeah.
Now we're moving on to the water pump, uh, excavator, two hundred grand.
So all the excavator, the current excavator is, um, is dated. It's, it needs some, um. Replacements because of age, there's some things need to be replaced. There's, that cost is getting up there to the point where what is it worth? Versus, is it worth putting sixty thousand into it when it's only worth sixty thousand if we traded it or sell it? So that's kind of where we're at. We're at a point where it's gonna cost us quite a bit to. There's a muffler component that has to be replaced every like seven years and that, that alone is like twenty thousand. New tracks need to be replaced, which is gonna be like. Five to seven per track, yeah. There's some other components. So it just starts adding up. So we're like, alright.
Why, why put them into a.
Why put it into something that's only worth that? So that's what, that's what it is.
Hey, next one is public safety spotcars. It's one squad car and one detective car. That new squad car, uh, will keep our ten because we got Lockheed. We buy a three-year. Nonetheless, it's for many years, isn't it? That was purchased out of the very Urin area, if you guys are. So that's a twenty seventeen.
Yeah. Uh, purchase crack seal machine.
So this is part of our asset management, uh, to be able to crack seal our own, own roads instead of waiting every summer years to. Bring in a consultant. We can just, we can do it as needed, um, on a yearly basis. Um, so this will improve our responsiveness to.
It's safe in the long run.
Yep.
For example, last, this last summer, we resurfaced three of our, oh, we had a really rough winter. And normally it'll take a couple of years for those cracks to rip through. We're starting to see them already because of the pre-salt circles. So we don't have anything slated for another year. We don't wanna go through another winter. We don't want to be having the cracks in those, so.
Are there any staff who knows how to operate them or that, or will they need training?
Yes, yes, the both of those. We, um, we have staff that have done it before in previous jobs, but we need some training. Um, but there are some guys that are familiar with it. Some. Our foreman is familiar with it from a previous job. One of the, uh, operators is familiar when he used to work for the state, they did a lot of cracks. And so we've got some experience, but some training.
Cool.
Uh, last one is retro pistol truck.
So one of our, we have two dedicated salt trucks and remember we had to have the engine replaced in one of them this winter. Basically, International was telling us that the reason that engine failed was because you don't, you're not using enough. So, um, like you said, they're two dedicated salt trucks. Not real sure why they purchased two trucks that essentially sit around for nine months out of the year. Um, but basically what we're, what we're proposing is to. Remove the dedicated salt component, put a regular box on it, purchase an insert. So then we can use that truck rest of the year and in winter, we can put the salt insert into it, use it as a salt truck, remove it, have it. So we don't, I mean, there, there are two thousand twelve, two dedicated salt trucks, one to twelve and one to two thousand thirteen. They only have like thirty thousand miles on them. Yeah, now it's got some motor in it, so retrofit it, use it, we did a lot of life out of it. It saves us from buying a new truck for a while.
Cool.
Okay, and last is the infrastructure projects. So these will either be road, or water, or road and water.
Can I sneak out on this one?
Children can put to bed.
Use one by one. There's a lot of projects here where. They've established the prioritization.
By Steve.
On the asset management.
Yeah.
I committed five grand.
See you guys.
Go sleep.
Now, if you say it's asset management prioritized, basically.
Well, yeah, it's enterprise funds and it's funds that are, um, we're getting through the street funding, either Act Fifty-One funding to help us support them or the two oh four. Um, the street knowledge fund, uh, so. Again, like if you want me to go through them, I can go through them.
Nope. Thank you. No, it's nice to have the list here though to see.
It's nice to see you.
Volume that we have to do in the city.
Right, right. I mean, I am pursuing, I'm going to be pursuing law interest loans. Like for example, the Hawthorne Station, um, we're looking for a USDA grant around June timeframe. I'll be working on that. Um, we got a grant for the design on the, obviously the light service line replacement program. Um, that's, we're going for D W S R up funding again on that. You're gonna see that in May. Because we have to need a June one project plan, um. Submit all the requirement for that. And we already talked about state streets rehab. We've talked about the C S L storage project for phase two that. Needs to start construction July first, Cleveland Avenue resurfacing. That is slated. That will be later this summer. We have grant funding of about five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, so our match is about two sixty-seven. Um, Kingsley Avenue Water Main Plaza is a D W S R up. Project again, we kind of threw that in there so that we would get points, let's put it those down to that's. Kingsley between Stadium Drive and Lake Shore Drive.
Okay.
Where we had a lot of water main breaks, so, um.
I don't see a price there, but that's something that has to be done.
It's the five seventy-five.
It's the five seventy-five.
Oh, it goes down one, yeah.
Yeah, got it, yeah.
Um, Anchors Way, Crescent Shape and Mill Enfill. Um, we're actually doing the Mill Enfill on Anchors Way. The Crescent Shape going down Anchors Court, we're holding up on because of Anchors Way High Water Mitigation, or yes, High Water Mitigation Grant. Um, because of granted all kinds of contaminated soils, we're waiting on results from Lico. On that to see if that's the most feasible place to discharge the water at, so. Um, again, I'm gonna stop, but if you have any questions, it's getting late, um.
I can't wait to see your budget, Ben, because I don't know how we're gonna pay for the whole stuff.
Yeah, I don't know how you prioritize. I mean, everything's a priority.
We're gonna have to see.
Some cuts to do.
This is why the one and two dollars for paid part. It's all for.
Yes, I agree.
I think if everybody out there could see this.
The one, the one business person that I know, you know, I talked to people today, even though I didn't really do it, I said, if you could come tonight and listen to see what we have to place for, you know. Water and sure, and you can understand that.
Thanks to our decision last year, they can listen to the entirety of this conversation in the next two days.
Well, is that bringing our music tuning in?
Wait, are we being grabbed?
Thank you, Ben, and then. Thank you.
Anything further?
I'm good.
Well, we will call this, we got it at nine forty-six P M.